Were you at the meeting? So, yeah, you're right. Squeezes. The winner, which one? Oh my God. Said it again, just to make sure you get the right one.
Good evening, everyone, and let me first of all wish every one of you and our Irish community a happy St. Patrick. This is always a celebration that everyone looks through the years and we wait until the spring comes and hopefully nothing would happen before our St. Patrick parade this weekend and everything will go well. Hopefully the weather will cooperate. But again, I would like to wish our Irish community in the city of Lawrence and the surrounding community a very happy St. Patrick's Day. I would like everyone to stand up for a moment of silent meditation. I would like to ask our superintendent from the Greater Lawrence Technical School, John La Boy, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Council Vasquez.
Present.
Council LaPlante.
Here.
Council Toomey.
Here.
Council Reyes. Council Monte. Council Aquino.
Present.
Council Bernal.
Present.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
And Council President Maldonado.
Present. The minutes. I would like to enter a motion to approve the minutes of January 29, 2015, and February 3, 2015.
Second.
If that's been made and properly second, in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. We'd like to move right in into public participation. We have three persons that would like to speak. I would like to recognize first, Mr. Molly.
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaign promise of safe Florence only possible you as our elected official and Mayor Rivera's support of our police department and the senior officers' union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has been so great because of hard-working DPW worker, a few workers, and the best leadership. Our DPW workers are the best in nation. We, the citizen, demand of you support our DPW worker and their wonderful leadership. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrificed their safety to our citizen be safe. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera, support our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh moving forward, turnaround plan has made Lawrence Public School one of the best in Massachusetts. Our citizen support our teachers and their union. Now, our eighty-three thousand citizen witnessing that our teachers, after years of without contract, they have contract. In the remaining months of before election of 2015, we demand of you support our police officers and their union, support our DPW and our firefighters. Thank you.
The next person in line is Mr. Russell, Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. Name's Dick Russell, reside at thirty-four Cross Street. I'd like to take the opportunity to wish those of Irish extraction a happy St. Patrick's Day. My mother's maiden name was Cannonman, so that makes me, what, half-Irish, amongst other things. First, I'd like to follow the lead of another city commentator, Mr. H. Molly, and commend the city's DPW job for an admirable job that they did with snow removal. You should make a video and send it to the city of Lynn, my birthplace. Despite having a mayor named Kennedy, their plowing made Lawrence look like a Florida beach. Second, how far along the pipeline is the idea of the Essex County Emergency Communications Center idea of dispatching Lawrence Public Safety Agencies? I heard of this the first time last week at a neighborhood meeting. You councilors know me well enough to realize that public safety is one of my two top concerns in Lawrence, along with honesty and open government. Why are all the changes in the various city ordinances involving employment, various city jobs? Is this another attempt by this body to bring more jobs under their control? Are they worried that your city personnel director isn't capable of doing his job properly? Fourth, agenda item seventy-eight fifteen wants to increase the polling hours from seven a.m. to eight p.m. What are the hours now? I thought they were seven a.m. to eight p.m. Fifth, an agenda item sixty-seven fifteen, is that a case of you can't live with them and you can't live without them? It appears it's possible, quite possible, that nobody wants this job, or you can't find anybody worthy of the job? Finally, as a member of Tom Duggan's VAS committee, I would like to invite the eight of you that have, as of yet, purchased our tickets to please attend. State auditor, Democratic State Auditor Suzanne Bump is going to be the keynote speaker. There are members of the city Lawrence School Committee and the Lawrence Greater Voc Tech Committee that will be in attendance. So dig deep into those pockets of your treasury, your campaign treasury, spring for the money, come, have a good time. You people will not be made the butt of any jokes because everything has been scripted as of now. Thank you, and I hope to see you all Friday night.
The next person in line is Joe D'Amico.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Joe D'Amico, eleven Lorenzo Row. Tonight I want to commend one of our department heads, the finance director. We finally had a stabilized budget. In the past twenty years, we've had eight different budget directors. This is the one that's the best, has been the best qualified, that knows what he is doing. The second thing is, I'm bringing it up to you people, pretty soon it's going to be budget time. Have you, do you, does anybody of you councilors know how much money is left in each department? And the third item is, we need to write a history book of the city of Lawrence, the true city. Why do we have cannonballs right in front of City Hall? How many people can answer where they came from? Where were the city major theaters? We were known around the world for having the most theaters in a row. All different types of history is done in Lawrence. The Dodgers were built on Methuen Street. Guaranteed, anybody that lives in the city probably doesn't remember or know that they're there unless they're older than me. So what I propose, or see if someone can do something about it, because what happens is, the mayor's going, and other delegation people are going to schools, we don't need Dr. Seuss. We need to have the kids understand what the true Laurentians really were. So we can, they can look back and say, I want to stay here when I graduate, when I get my jobs, and I want to live here. Thank you.
That concludes public participation. Councilors, I would like to take a few items as a block out of order. Item forty-two fifteen through item forty-six fifteen, I would like to take those, and only those, as a block out of order.
A motion to take documents number forty-two fifteen through forty-six fifteen out of order and as a block.
Council President, would you also want to put fifty-one fifteen on that?
Fifty-one fifteen, then let's take also sixty fifteen then. Madam Chair of the Organized Committee, will you take?
I amend the motion, yes, to take forty-two fifteen, forty-three fifteen, forty-four fifteen, forty-five fifteen, forty-six fifteen, fifty-one fifteen, and sixty fifteen, all out of order and as a block.
There is a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Madam Chair of, Vice Chair of the Personal Committee, document forty-two fifteen first.
The Personal Committee met Monday, the ninth, and we have the first item forty-two fifteen, the appointment of Mr. Luis Belin for the Council of Aging, and I believe Mr. Luis is here, and I would like to make a motion. It came up with a favorable recommendation, and I will make that in a motion.
Second. Motion has been made to approve document forty-two fifteen, and it has been properly second. Are there any questions, councilors?
Can we see the?
I'm sorry?
Can we have them stand up?
Of course. Louise?
Yes.
Will you step forward, please? Council Alvarez probably has some questions for you, so.
Hi, it's nice to see you.
Hi, good to see you again.
Yeah, I know you're very active, and I just wanted to take a few minutes to ask you to talk a little bit about why you want to do this job. I know you for some time now, and I know how interested you are in the future of Lawrence, and I think that it would be great for people at home and here to hear it from you.
Right, I've been a resident of Lawrence since nineteen forty-six. I went to school here, I graduated here, I had my children here. I left for a period of a year, but I came back again. I've lived on Riverside Drive, four twenty-six Riverside Drive, for the last thirty-plus years. My husband and I are both retired right now. We just have our grandchildren in the immediate area, so we have a lot of time to devote more time to the city. We do the polling at the Gilmet School. We've done that now for the past two years. We're involved with the Tower Hill Neighborhood Association for, I can't even remember how many years. I enjoy, my husband and I enjoy going to the Senior Center. I mean, it's a really good place. They do a lot of good for the citizens of the city of Lawrence, and like I said, we're both retired, and I think it's a great place to give our time. And there's a piece of property near my house that's owned by the state, and for the last thirty years, all year long, I go out there and I clean it, and I call the state, and they come by and they pick up the trash between my house and the pumping station. I've been cleaning that, and I was cleaning the lot across the street. My husband was mowing the lawn there, but now the city's taking it over.
Well, you guys are a wonderful couple.
Thank you.
And, you know, I appreciate what you do, you know, for the city. It's like unsung heroes because you do all this stuff, but a lot of people don't know that you've been so active and that you've been doing all this work, and that's why I wanted to make sure that other people have the same information that I have, and I want to thank you so much for sharing, and I want to appeal to the, my colleagues to please support the committee's recommendation and vote in favor of bringing you onboard to the Council of Aging.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? If there is none, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Madam Vice Chair. Thank you, Louise.
All right, thank you.
Greatly appreciated.
Item.
Item forty-three fifteen.
Item forty-three fifteen, it's the appointment of Mr. Dennis Belin for the Council of Aging. It was sent up with a favorable recommendation for a new appointment, three years, and I'll do that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Councilors, are there any questions? Yes?
Yes, with your approval to have him come forward.
Dennis, will you come forward, please?
My name is Dennis Belin, and I volunteered for this position. I went to the Senior Center for some help, and I received a great service from them, and I felt I'd like to give back to the community also. I've done a lot of volunteer work, mostly as Santa Claus in Methuen and Lawrence, and I enjoy doing it, and it's good for the grown-ups as well as the children, and it's good for me. And I'd just like to keep Lawrence going and to follow the position because I am a long Laurentian, and I plan to be here for many more years. Thank you.
Well, I also think that you've done wonderful work throughout the years, and again, you're one of those hidden jewels in Lawrence that people don't know about, and that's why I'm so glad that you came forward to share a little bit of your history and of your commitment to the city, and I am so happy that you are going to be, you know, volunteering and taking up this task for our city, and I know you will do a wonderful job. And again, I asked my colleagues to please support the committee's favorable recommendation to bring you onboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilors, anybody else? Okay, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Dennis, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Vice Chair, forty-four fifteen.
Item forty-four fifteen, it's the reappointment of Amelia Stunzer for the Council of Aging. He came up with a favorable recommendation, and I will do that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Councilors?
Is she here?
Amelia?
Thank you, Council President. Hi, Amelia.
She has a hard time hearing.
Oh, it's so good to see you here tonight. I'm so glad that you're volunteering, and I was hoping that you could talk a little bit about yourself.
Well, I was born in Lawrence, at the corner of Myrtle and Walnut Streets in a snowstorm, and I've lived in Lawrence all my life. I graduated from Lawrence High School with great distinction, class of nineteen forty-two, and I went on to Boston University. I got a Bachelor of Business Administration degree in class of nineteen forty-eight. I've worked and retired from the city of Lawrence Department of Training, and after I retired, I've been doing volunteer work. I volunteered with the Merrimack Valley Court, reading to first graders in the Lawrence Public Schools, and I also volunteer at the Senior Center with the nurse, and so I think we have a very nice and vibrant Senior Center. We have a lot of activities, educational and social, and I like to be part of it, and that's why I'd like to continue.
Great, thank you so much for sharing. Again, I'm asking my colleagues to support the committee's favorable recommendation for you to continue to provide services for the Council on Aging, and I thank you very much for your liveliness and your ability, okay, to make sure that our city continues to move forward and that we don't forget, okay, the important people that have made history, the elders, and we need to make sure that we never forget what they have done to make Lawrence a better place, and you're one of the people who have been doing that for a while now, and I'd like to see you continue. Thank you.
Councilors, take a vote.
Council President.
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Quick word. So I couldn't help but notice or listen that Ms. Stunzer, you graduated from Lawrence High School in nineteen forty-two.
Yeah.
Which tells me that you were graduated from high school in the midst of World War II, and it also reminds me of the fact that there were very few people who at that point were graduating from high school because of the war effort, and even fewer people, fewer women, were actually went on to college, so, in those days. And so it's quite a tribute to you as someone who has set the tone and set a new record, set a new course, especially for women, because it's too often and not at that time, many of the women didn't have an opportunity to go to college and you went to Boston University. So thank you to you and to your parents for having the foresight and the ability to have you go to school, both Lawrence High School and BU, and then setting you through a very good record of now, of contributing to our community even in the year 2015. So thank you so, so much.
Hear, hear.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Amelia, congratulations, and thank you. Madam Vice Chair, continue with forty-five fifteen.
Item forty-five fifteen, it's the reappointment of Maria Vasquez to the Council of Aging for three years' term. It was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I will do that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Councilors?
Yes, I'd like her to come forward.
Maria, are you available?
It's nice to see you. I don't think there's ever an activity that I go to when I don't see you there in being active, you and your family.
Yes.
I'm so glad that you want to do this kind of work, and I was going to ask that, you know, I know you and I've seen you, I want people at home in the audience, I know a lot of the councilors have seen you, to get to know a little bit about you, so.
Okay. Well, I've been living in Lawrence for forty years, I think, and my children was raised here, and Lawrence, went to school here. I retired for the city of Lawrence Public Schools. I, se me olvidó. I was in the board the last, this is my second term in the board. I work, I teach the citizenship class at the Senior Center, and I hope I can do all things to the Senior Center.
I know you've been around at the Senior Center for a long time.
Yeah.
Also, I know that you're an advocate for people with disabilities, particularly children.
Yeah.
So it's wonderful that you have always been there for the people that may be forgotten, you know, because sometimes we just go on and on and on living our lives, not recognizing that there are certain people who need our help, and I'm so happy that you've been there to lend a hand throughout the years. So again, I want the, my colleagues to support the committee's favorable recommendation. Thank you so much for doing this.
Councilors?
Real, just a real big thing, this is the last of the Council on Aging, and I just want to make one real quick comment, which is the fact that this is a volunteer board, so each one of these individuals are serving their city, and they're volunteering today. They're still remaining active, and they're still contributing, and so I wanted to not only thank you, Ms. Vasquez, for serving your second term, but I also want to thank the rest of the appointments this evening for wanting to not only sit on the sideline, get off the sidelines, but actually get in a position where you can make an impact, and I wanted to make sure that they were appreciated, I know how appreciative I am that they're taking that step. Well, they don't have to do this, they do this because they want to. They love their Senior Center, they love this city, and they want to get involved, so thank you very much.
Okay, let's. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Maria. Madam Vice Chair, continue with document forty-six fifteen.
Item forty-six fifteen, it's the new appointment of Mr. Stephen Murphy for the Bellevue Cemetery Board. It was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I will do that as a motion, as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Steve, are you, Steve, will you come forward? Is Mr. Murphy here? Good evening, Steve.
How are you?
Council Alvarez Rodriguez.
Hi. I always want to make sure that the audience and people know who we're appointing.
Sure.
And how important and valuable you are, so if you could just share a little bit about yourself.
Sure. My name's Steve Murphy. I live here in Lawrence on Prospect Hill, on the corner of Kendall and Ferry Street. I live in the house my grandparents built back in the fifties. I grew up right across the street in the house my grandmother grew up in, that my parents still live in. I work here in the city for a small business, so I've been part of Lawrence for my entire life. I'm also raising my children here in Lawrence.
Great, and what about your interest in the cemetery board?
I feel that getting more involved in the city is really important, especially where I live here. I work here, I grew up here, and I'm raising my children, and I think Lawrence is very rich in history, especially the Bellevue Cemetery is a big part of it, obviously, and I want to get more involved, and I think starting the cemetery is a great, great place.
Thank you so much for sharing. You know, I definitely want to support the committee report, and I wouldn't know who would not do that, so thank you so much for sharing about yourself.
Thank you.
Councilors, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Real quick, I got to say something. Real quick, you had a, I gotta say something. This is a very challenging board. We have many boards in our city that are challenging, and this is right up there with a, with a tough board. It's gonna take a lot of perseverance, and sometimes you're gonna be saying, what am I doing on this board? What did I get myself into? And there's gonna be those, those kinds of times. And, and we're gonna need good people like yourself to step up to really do it. I'm just being very candid, quite frankly.
Yep.
And to the amusement of some of my colleagues.
Just carry them away.
But we do need some good people. We need some, that board needs direction in a big-time way. And every year is constant, and I'm not saying that people on the board right now are bad people, I'm not saying that at all.
Right.
But they, there needs to be a coalescence of that unit to really start working in a very progressive manner. And there needs to be some real fresh ideas and bold ideas. So I'm hopeful that you can go in there. Not many people go in there as a cemetery expert, I doubt that you are. But what, you have people who are willing to work there for you. You just need to make sure you're a good manager or make management decisions and financial decisions with respect to the various trusts that are in that, that board. So I just say that to offer you oddly encouragement, because I want to see you do well there. And it's one of those things that nobody wants to think about. Nobody wants to think about the Bellevue Cemetery. The only time you want to think about it is on Memorial Day or the day that it's an anniversary of someone who's, you lost in their lives, and you go to visit them and you see the condition of that place. So there are very few times that we actually think about it. But it's not just those couple of times a year, it's all year round for many, many people. So I wish you all the best of luck. If there's anything I can do, please let me know. I want to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.[719.84][719.84](APPLAUSE).
Madam Chair.
Item 5115.
5115, it's the reappointment of Richard Rivera to the zoning board of peers.
And he came up with a favorable recommendation, and I will do that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Richard, will you come forward? Richard?
Richard, is he here?
Richard, again, Richard is not here, but I guess Roger Tumi and I saw him in action at the zoning board, and we definitely appreciate the job that he's doing at the zoning board.
I just want to echo that sentiment. I know, I'm with Counselor Tumi at the zoning board for items in my district, our district, often. And he's been an excellent member of the zoning board, very thoughtful, definitely listens to the constituents. And I will say, I felt like a lot of times it'd be easy to vote one way, more difficult to vote with the law, which was the other way. And he follows the rules of law. I was impressed.
Yes, I was impressed, though, definitely.
Me too.
Great. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Madam Chair, continue with the last item of the personal committee, item 6015.
6015, it's the reappointment of Kate Hernandez to the Lawrence Historical Commission. He came up with a favorable recommendation, and I will do that as a formal motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Is Kate here?
She is.
Kate, will you come forward?
Hi.
Hello.
Kate, it's good to see you.
Good to see you, thank you.
I would like for you to share with the audience and the people at home a little bit about yourself and your interest in continuing with this work.
Okay. I've lived here in the city since 2005. My husband and I bought our home here, have two small children. I joined the commission a few, couple of years ago, seeing a vacancy, seeing a need within the city for, for people to volunteer and to step forward. That was really one of the things, the reasons we moved to Lawrence. We knew that having small children, you know, that we were looking to build our family and looking to be part of the community, not just to live in a community that we could, you know, absorb and enjoy the things that they have to offer, but also be a part of developing the community that we're living in. So I really found that as an answer to that call when we moved to Lawrence and purposely intended to be involved. The last meeting I was here at, left here with my fifth grader, my fifth grade son in a snowstorm, because that's what happens in February here. And I found myself driving down the street in the snow and driving down Common Street and right to the entrance of the oat mills. And I asked him what his experience, what his knowledge of the history of Lawrence was. And he was blank. He did not know. I went home and I took his social studies book, I took my third grader's social studies book, and I went through the index of their books to find out what they were able to learn. And there was not a mention of Lawrence. Third grade, the entire, the splash across the front of it says Massachusetts. This isn't just some civics textbook across the country. This is Massachusetts history, and there was not a single mention of Lawrence in there. Francis Cabot Lowell was mentioned on one page, but that was all. So earlier, somebody spoke about what is the history in Lawrence, and can anybody identify some of the landmarks and why we have certain things around the city? And that was something that I met yesterday, just by chance, yesterday, met with two other commissioners, talk about our mission statement, our purpose, our rationales for what it is that we're doing, and being a resource for the education of the, of what it is that Lawrence has to offer in our history was, was high among what our reason for being is.
You are truly fantastic, you know, and it's great that you've shared this with everyone else in the community. And history is very important. And if we don't save a lot of our historical landmarks and preserve a lot of our history, people will never know what an important part Lawrence has played in the history of this country.
Yes.
You know, with this industry, et cetera.
Yes, and that's what we're looking at, not only for the history that we've had, but for the people who live here now, to know the history of it and to take pride in the history of it, to take pride in the current and to take pride in the future of it as well.
Wonderful. And of course, I'm going to vote in favor of the committee's report that we should accept you, you know, to do this work. And I encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselors, let's take a vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Tumi.
I just want to make a comment. Why don't you hook up with Joe D'Amico over there? Good. Thank you very much for coming back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.[1073.94][1073.94](APPLAUSE).
Counselors, we are now going back to the regular order of business. We're gonna go into public hearings. There's gonna be a presentation on Document 238, 239, and 24014. So what I would like to do, I would like to ask Brian Peña to come forward. It's gonna be approximately 10 to 15 minutes. And then we will, if it is your pleasure, we can take a vote as a block or individually. Brian?
All right. Good evening. So before your three documents, three ordinances that my department has been working with, Woodard and Curran on for the last 10 months or so, on strengthening the stormwater-related ordinances for the city. In the theme, or I guess in the, in the essence of the history of Lawrence, as you know, the Merrimack River is at the epicenter of the Industrial Revolution here in Lawrence, and if not for the, for the river, Lawrence would not have been built. So, you know, our, our main goal with these three ordinances is to protect our water quality here in the city, not just the Merrimack, but also the Shawsheen and the Spiget and all the tributaries in the area. In a nutshell, the ordinances are gonna protect the quality of water that we introduce into the river by prohibiting illicit discharges, so prohibiting from contamination of the rivers through direct and indirect sources. So we'll prohibit dumping, prohibit grease in the, in the river. And then compelling our developers to start to think about the impact of their, of their development on our watershed in general. Woodard and Curran is here with me today. I have Zach Henderson from Woodard and Curran is, has prepared a presentation. We cut it down from 30 minutes to 15 minutes, in the spirit of trying to keep things brief. But we do have a presentation that will outline, or at least try to summarize, the three ordinances. Start that. We do have some handouts, too, so I will, I'll work on getting the handouts. I can set you up for that.
Everybody awake back there? Greetings and good evening. Zach Henderson, I'm a Water Resources Manager with Woodard and Curran, and I've had the pleasure of working with Brian over the last several months on the development of the, of the ordinances. We're all set, so no one will be blinded by the projector. So Brian asked me to provide a high-level 15-minute overview of the three ordinances that are under consideration this evening, and that's what this presentation is. Be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion. I would like to say that we've had a great experience over the last several months with both Public Works, the Water and Sewer Commissioner, planning, economic development, and inspectional services. So I commend the staff for the effort. So first things first, why the amendments to your code? I think primarily the Clean Water Act requires it and has required us to put forth these amendments. But maybe more importantly to you, the best management of sewers obligates some control of fats, oils, and grease prior to them getting into the sewer. And the management of stormwater both protects public health and the environment and reduces chances for community flooding. So those are the important things for the community. So this is the ordinance development process. The working group, as I mentioned, was represented by several departments and staff. We also employed RKAG associates as a planner. I think you met Judy if you're on the Council Ordinance Committee. We've had seven meetings over the last several months, as Brian alluded to, and we just wanted to kind of show you this as a demonstration of the work that's been completed over the last, the last several months. So I'll start off with stormwater amendments. There are two of them, both illicit discharge, which I'll define in just a moment, and also the stormwater management and erosion control ordinance. So the series of slides will really kind of talk about what is this that we're, that we're talking about, why is it important, what are the requirements in summary? And who will be affected by these, by these changes to the, to the ordinances? And in all cases, there are next steps. We removed several of those slides, but most of them rely on public education and outreach. Okay, so first, what are illicit discharges? This is terminology that the Environmental Protection Agency uses and defines it as any discharge to a stormwater drainage system that is not composed entirely of stormwater. So on the picture on the right, these could be direct connections. So these could be washing machines, floor drains, and sewer lines or private sewer laterals that tie into the storm drain. And for obvious reasons, it's not good to have those going into a drainage system. So those are a direct connection, illicit discharge. And unfortunately, over, over the history of development of infrastructure, sometimes these things happen. You put the wrong pipe in the, in the wrong pipe. An indirect discharge is any illegal dumping of toxic materials, pet waste, leaf litter, other things into the storm drain. That storm drainage does not go to a treatment facility, it goes directly to the river. And so those are illicit discharges as well. So there's direct connections and indirect connections related to illicit discharges. So what is the illicit discharge ordinance? The requirements largely strengthen what really is already on the books associated with management of sewer and drains, but it prohibits dumping or connecting of non-stormwater into the city's stormwater drainage systems. That's the essence of the, of the change to the, to the code. It allows exemptions for uncontaminated, some pump water irrigation, residential vehicle washing, and a number of others, including firefighting activities and things that are critical to, to health and safety. It may require property owners to replumb unauthorized connections. So if these sanitary sewer lines are connected to the wrong pipe, it may require property owners to change that and take those out and put them into the sanitary sewer system. The Board of Health was identified as the appropriate entity or its agents to administer and enforce this ordinance. That's in summary on the illicit discharge. So stormwater drainage and erosion control, I'll begin by just kind of introducing how the system works. These pipes are underground, a lot of folks don't understand this. The image that's on the screen there shows you the typical storm drain inlet. These are on the streets or in parking lots. Those drain into a pipe system, and those outlet directly into the river. This part of our drainage infrastructure is critical to development. We can't have it, have development without this infrastructure, but none of it is treated. So anything that's on the streets, on our lawns, on our parking lots, ends up directly in the river. Unfortunately, the byproduct of a good drainage system is that it carries all of this pollution with it into our water bodies and, and does not get treated. So unfortunately for, for us at this time, the Clean Water Act has done a great job over the last 40 years cleaning up the rivers, but it's primarily focused on industrial and sanitary wastewater. And stormwater is increasingly a problem. It's recognized by the regulatory agencies and communities across Massachusetts, across New England, and across the country are now having to focus a little more attention on this source of, of pollution. So the stormwater management control and, or stormwater management and erosion control ordinance essentially expands and strengthens current requirements under Title 18. So in proximity to the river, there are already requirements associated with stormwater control. This would expand and strengthen those requirements. It requires the acquisition of a stormwater permit for development activity of certain size and type. And again, the Board of Health is identified as the particular enforcement and administration entity. So really, this is a little bit more of a comprehensive change to the code. Any development sites greater than one acre of land disturbance, which is a threshold that's established by the Environmental Protection Agency, any developments of that size would be required to obtain a stormwater management permit. In addition, smaller sites that are categorized as lands that generate higher potential pollutant loads, so these may include things like gas stations, mechanics, garages, there's a list of industrial types of activities, they would be required to obtain a stormwater management permit. Or land disturbance of greater than 5,000 square feet within your combined sewer service areas. As you are familiar with, combined sewers tend to overflow when it rains too hard, so controlling runoff into those combined sewers is really critical to reduce that impact to the river. And it's an obligation under federal law. So single and two-family dwellings would be exempted from these requirements, so those, those folks are out. And there are a number of other exemptions that are listed there and also in your handout that would be exempt from, from having to obtain a stormwater management permit. What does this permit really do? It does four things, essentially. It obligates an applicant, a developer of a, of a property, to design the site to minimize the increases in runoff from that property. Okay, so we want less water coming into the storm drain system than what was originally coming off of that property. In addition to that, it requires a, a site developer to minimize the pollution that comes off the property, and they may be required to engineer solutions to treat stormwater runoff prior to discharge into the city's storm drainage system. Also, there are requirements for management during construction of the facility to reduce the potential for erosion and sediment control. Sediment that comes off of a construction site can clog up your storm drains, cause management-related issues, and also pollute waterways. And then there's an obligation to develop a long-term operations plan associated with the engineered management on that facility. So that's in essence what's in the stormwater management requirement. So on to the wastewater amendments. This is fats, oil, and grease control. This, again, in this next series of slides, we'll talk a little bit about what it is, what are the requirements, who would be affected, and next steps. This is lovingly known as FOG to those of us that live in this world of, of water and wastewater, fats, oils, and grease. So this is just a kind of a series of images here of why this is a little bit of a problem, and this is an educational-related issue. When fats, oils, and grease are on our plate, we kind of like them, they taste great, but when they end up in the storm drain system, they could be a real problem. This is kind of how it looks. Fats, oils, and grease. Fats, oils, and grease accumulate in the sanitary sewer. They continue to accumulate and build up, and they actually float, so they generally accumulate on the top of the sewer, and you can see what happens here. They restrict the flow into that sanitary sewer. This is from Hampshire Street in Lawrence, this is what it looks like in the sewer, and this is the result. We have sanitary sewer overflows into the streets, into people's homes and basements, and into the river, all of which are illegal. So it's a challenge for all of us, we understand that. The ordinance is intended to provide clearer guidance and strengthen current requirements that already obligate food service establishments to have a grease trap or grease interceptor. The Board of Health, again, is identified as the administration entity and enforcement entity, and this would require installation of grease traps or interceptors for new food service establishments, and would require existing food service establishments to obtain a FOG permit and conduct maintenance inspection of their existing grease trap facility. So who will be affected? All food service establishments. The threshold holds of the amount of water that drains from their washing facilities would dictate larger or smaller systems that would have to be put in place, again, under new construction and new food service establishments. And then all sewer discharges, any of us, are responsible for minimizing those, and that would be obtained through kind of an outreach and education effort on the part of the Water and Sewer Department. So what are the impacts? Most facilities already have these systems. They've been required under previous code to install these systems, but this strengthens the requirements, requires that annual food service permit, the FOG permit to be pulled each year, and inspection and pumping is really the major requirement associated with this. Some establishments may require upgrades to their facility based on inspection by the city. Do I keep it within 15 minutes? So any questions for Brian or I on that?
What I would like to do first of all, before we ask, Counselor, before we ask questions to Brian and Jack, what I would like to do is have the clerk read the notice for public hearing, and then I'm going to open on all three documents, Document 238-14, 239-14, and 240-14, public comments on participation, and then Counselors will open it for the members of the council to direct their questions to Brian and Jack.
Documents 238, 239, and 240 of 2014, all the documents were published. In the newspaper on March 10, 2015, by stating that a notice will be given, the City Council will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, March 17, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning these proposed amendments, adding, in the case of Document 238, would cause the deletion of Section 13.08270 regarding grease oils and sand interceptors, and adding a new Chapter 8.32 concerning fats, oils, and grease regulations. In regard to Document 239, by adding a new Title 20, Chapter 20.03, Stormwater Management and Erosion Control, and Document 240, by adding a new title to Title 20, Chapter 20.01, Illicit Discharge, and adding that new title to the code. The summary was published in the newspaper, and a complete and unabridged version was published on the city website posted on March 6. Complete and unabridged copy of the measures were all made available for viewing, copying and examination in the City Clerk's Office, 200 Common Street, during any business day, during 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. And again, unabridged copy was posted on the city website, March 6.
Okay, are there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or favor or against any of these ordinance changes? Mr. Russell?
Name's Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street. Beginning of the presentation, you were talking about storm runoff going into the river. Why do we need a government dispensation to get snow dumped en masse, bulk snow dumped into the river, yet with the weather outside, it's melting, it's in a liquid form now, it's going to the same place? Can somebody explain that to me?
I believe that the Massachusetts Governor, in public, indicated that they have received special permission to dump snow.
I understand that.
Specifically just on this particular occasion, and I understand that...
Okay, now, did the Governor give us special dispensation? Because the storm runoff that's going into the catch basins and into the storm sewers is basically a liquid form of what we needed permission. Did we get permission to let that stuff go into the river?
We don't.
Why do we need permission to dump snow? Okay?
That is a good question, Mr. Russell. I don't have an answer. Obviously, that's a very good question. When snow melts on the streets and it runs off into our sewer, that is not control in any way, and I don't believe that the changes in this ordinance are going to affect that. But that is a good question, and again, I don't have an answer. Does any of you from the Water Department would like to address or speak on behalf of that? Maybe you can enlighten us?
I'll try my best to explain, although I can't explain why it requires us to get permission from the government, but I think it's mostly having to do with the fact that there's a lot of trash that gets picked up when you're introducing it in the river, whereas that kind of sort of stuff gets settled out in our catch basin systems, which is the reason why we have to periodically pump out the catch basins, because a lot of it actually settles in it. So for the most part, you're only going to get water runoff through catch basins, whereas when you're introducing it, you know, by loaders, you're introducing everything that you're picking up with it, all sorts of trash and, you know, anything else in the roads that, hopefully not, you know, trash cans, but stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else, first from the public, first from the public, I would like to, if there is anybody else that would like to speak in favor or against the changes in these ordinances that are being proposed by the Water Department? Nobody else? Okay. Then I'm going to close public participation on these three items. Counselors, Counselor...
No, just on, Mr. President, just on the issue of the storm, of the water and the Is there anything that, because I really didn't understand your response. I couldn't hear you clearly, so I was, I don't know if what you're saying is that when it melts, it has different components? I don't know, is it affected?
Well, it's not so much that, no. If it's introduced into the water, you know, in theory, yes, any water entering the catch basins will end up in the river untreated, as it is currently. I think it's mostly the difference is the solids that you'd be introducing.
The difference is the solid?
Solids.
So...
So for instance, you'll get a lot of sand in the snow that gets dumped into the river, whereas if water were to run off into the catch basin, that sand gets settled out. That's just one example.
Okay.
So what you're saying, Brian, is the rate of salt that goes into the water is different than from dumping snow, dumping a lot of snow versus the melting on the streets?
That's a good point also, is the rate, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that wasn't what he said, though, but...
Yeah, exactly, it's a good point, though.
And I want to come back, okay?
Sure.
I just wanted to hit that while you guys were still discussing it.
Okay.
But I do want to come back with some questions.
You can go continue, because we are in the...
No, okay, you too.
Okay, Counselor Vasquez, and then Counselor LaPlante.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I'd like to first of all thank Mr. Brian Peña for all the hard work that he has put into this. I'm sure that, you know, it hasn't been easy, but I did have a question, particularly on Document 238-14, and when we look at the enforcement portion and we look at the violations, I have a little bit of confusion when it comes to the first offense. I know that there's a description underneath, but there's not a, like an actual, how would I put it? So if you look at the second offense, third offense, it has a value...
No penalty.
No penalty on the first offense. That's what it seems like.
Your draft shows...
So the first offense doesn't have a penalty attached to it, but the second and third offense do.
My version has penalties on all three offenses.
Maybe, could it be the way that it printed out?
Could be. We're talking about Document 238-14?
Yeah, 238-14.
That's what I'm looking at. Yeah, my copy has, the one that we submitted has a...
Yeah, because it says for the...
The printout didn't come out correctly, that's correct.
Okay. Could I get, just for purposes of knowing what the first offense violation is? Oh, okay, we do have it. So just to clarify, I'm going to read it out loud to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The way that it should look like is actually different. There should be a total of four columns in the sheet. The first offense for the minor violation will be $50. The second offense will be $100, and the third offense will be $150. When it comes to the intermediate violation, the first offense will be $100, second offense will be $250, and the third offense will be $500. And for a major violation, the first offense will be $500, second offense will be $1,000, and the third offense will be $1,500. Okay?
Thank you.
And the second, thank you very much. The second question, thank you also for helping out. The second question that I have is, how is this going to impact directly the homeowners? Because I know that in the presentation, and when I look at the ordinance, it says individuals, but individuals could mean, you know, tenants, but at the end of the day, are the homeowners that are going to be, you know, facing this violations?
So specifically from a fats, oils, and grease's standpoint, this is applicable mostly to food service establishments. This is applicable to restaurants in the city or places where they prepare food. To, for our residential community, the real meat of this is going to be a public outreach program. So our department will, you know, in conjunction with Woodard and Curran and other consultants, will develop outreach programs to reach out to the homeowners and inform them of, you know, essentially of the best practices for fats, oils, and grease's management. So don't dump your unused oil or cooking oil down the drain, for instance, because it does end up in the service pipes and into our sewer and ultimately could cause backups. So it's really just going to be focused on an educational component, but there will be no enforcement action on the residential customers.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. LaPlante?
All right, so start off with the FOG, which is Document 138, 238. So we talked about restaurants that are primarily being impacted on that. In the presentation, was it Jake?
Zach.
Zach. Zach said that most of the restaurants are in compliance, and if there needs to be, there'll be some minor tweaking. Do we, so I guess when we're talking about tweaking, we're talking about that, are some of these establishments aware of what kind of costs that they're going to be associated with upgrading their FOGs?
So actually, yeah, a couple of points on that. One of them is, yes, you are correct, and as Zach mentioned, a lot of them are in compliance because throughout, you know, throughout, you know, many years, the engineering department here in the city has required these grease interceptors to be installed. So, you know, the majority of them should have them installed. We verify, we've gone through some of the records to indicate that they all do have them. When we talk about some tweaking, we're talking about some of them that may be undersized, that may require for them to be oversized, but the biggest impact is going to be on the maintenance, because while the city has enforced to have them installed, we've never followed up and made sure that they're actually being maintained. And if you have a system that is not being maintained, you might as well not have it, well, you might as well not have a system if it's not being maintained properly. So that's going to be the biggest impact. So we will be reaching out to the business owners, and in fact, as a condition to their food service permit renewal, we will be introducing this new FOG permit and going over, you know, the requirements of the new permit. We have developed a list of recommended haulers in the city, so that we will be providing. So part of the maintenance is periodically they'll have to have these interceptors or grease traps inspected and then pumped as they become full. So as they become full with grease, they have to have them pumped and disposed of.
So I guess one of the things, just on that one alone, is, how often, when was the last time many of these restaurants have been inspected for this purpose? Is it one and done, once they get their initial one and no one's gone back to check these things?
My understanding is the city has not followed up. Most restaurants do do the inspections because it may be part of their own internal SOPs. From our talks with several of the larger ones we know, that they do do that. In fact, there was one fast food restaurant that opened recently and had an issue with that, where their interceptor had actually caused sewage backups, and we went out there to respond to it. We spoke to them, and the restaurant manager had, you know, was very apologetic, you know, he explained that in the rush to try to get the restaurant open prior to the, or as closely to the school opening as possible at the high school, they had forgotten to sign up for the periodical inspections and maintenance, which is part of their internal SOPs. Once the issue became apparent to them, he called the vendor, they pumped it all out and are now on a, I think it's a quarterly inspection schedule with that vendor.
So my last point on that one is, and this cuts across to all of them, is that we're relying heavily on inspectional services, relying heavily on the Board of Health, and it would not surprise me that when we go ahead and start doing these inspections, that we find out that these restaurants do not have their systems up to par, and that there's going to need to be some modifications that, and I'm not sure how costly they are, but it's going to be costly to them, and it would not surprise me to see that, because for the course of time, and here's my editorial comment, for the course of time, we've eviscerated inspectional services, and there's a lot of things that have happened in our city that if we had a more vigorous inspectional services department, it would not take place. And so these things, over time, things have probably gotten worse because nobody's really checking them, and so it would not surprise me on the forefront that we see some significant modifications required. You're not going to be issuing, but their permit's going to be reliant on them getting that thing up to speed, right?
Correct.
So if they don't get this thing up to speed and have the proper facilities there, we may see what? Are you going to close down these restaurants until they get that in operation? Do you give them time? Because my suspicion is that there's going to be more than you possibly imagine that are going to fall into that category.
You're right, so all of this is being worked out in the regulatory portion or the regulations portion, so that the erosion regulations that'll govern the day-to-day operations of the inspectional services department, engineering department. But you're right in saying that if they do not get into compliance, my understanding is that the food inspector who oversees the food and service establishment renewals will not renew the permit. To that point, though, you know, these devices, again, they're all, you know, we anticipate that 99.9% of these food service establishments have the device, and that the biggest challenge is going to be to get them into compliance in terms of inspections and regular maintenance of it.
So here's what I want an answer for, if you can get this to me later. What's going to happen when you find a food service, a restaurant? What's going to happen when you find a food service, a restaurant, who has it, but it remains not in compliance? What do you do at that point? Do you give them a buffer time? Do you give them a two-week window, a one-week window, a three? Do you give them any kind of time to get into compliance? Or do you immediately go in and say, "We're shutting this thing down" until you get this thing in?
Yes, do you have a...
There's a six-month timeline. Important thing to note, and I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm going to defer this one to Zach because Zach's a little more familiar with that, the answer to that question.
I think this gets back to the kind of inspection requirements. It's, the ordinance was developed specifically to not require inspectional services to go do inspections. The reliance is on the food service establishment to provide the appropriate documentation that inspections have been completed during the time of obtaining the food service permit. So there wouldn't be a staff impact associated with those. The discretion is up to the inspectional services and the Board of Health ultimately on inspections that would have to take place by staff. So that's one important thing to note because there won't be active inspections. It'll be going out looking for these problems. It'll be the obligation of the food service establishments to say, "Yep, we are maintaining the system that we have in place." Second to that, in the actual ordinance in section 8.32.09... 8.32.100 talks about substandard grease interceptors. And any food service establishment without one will be given a compliance deadline.
What was the citation on that? I'm sorry. Under this one or it's 8.32? Are you saying 8.31?
8.32.100. So that provides the overview of the timeframe for addressing those issues.
All right, thank you. Now moving on to the next one, which is the storm management portion, 239-14. Again, on that one, it's my understanding, listening to the presentation, that if you're a single-family homeowner or a two-family, if you're developing a new project, that you're not going to be under the regulations. Is that, I understand that correctly? And that's new construction on those, on that. If you're, if you have in beyond or greater than 5,000 square feet and you don't fit those requirements, then you do, you are under these new stormwater management ordinances. Am I understanding that correctly?
So not if you are a single-family homeowner, but if the development consists of the erection of a new single-family home
Thank you.
or two-family home, correct. So that would be, so regardless of the size of the property, if the development is a single-family or a two-family home, it wouldn't be subject to the requirements.
So I'm not sure how widespread this is. How many developments are we looking at in the city that do not fit that exemption that have been permitted annually? I mean, how widespread is this?
How many properties would fall under jurisdiction?
Yeah, if we did this for the last calendar year, what's our net? How many people are we looking at or how many organizations or how many permits we've had to have issued ballpark? I mean, I'm trying to get a sense of how prevalent this is in our city.
Yeah, I don't have the number. I know inspectional services would have the number. I know that we recently looked at properties that filed the EPA Construction General Permit, which is required for a property over an acre. And at our last review, I think there were about six properties in the last year.
Six, you said?
Six, I believe, was it six properties? Six properties over an acre that we saw when we pulled the EPA general permits.
And I guess, and the follow-up on that one is, and this is where we actually are taxing. We are using our personnel, the inspectional services officials, to go onto the properties to inspect and to make sure the permits are intact and they've complied with whatever the permit suggests. Am I right on that? They're going to need to go out there and do inspections?
We're relying more on the engineering department to perform these inspections, which are specifically for stormwater. For the first year, we will be subcontracting these inspections. And the plan is to evaluate whether or not there is enough need to hire someone full-time to do this or continue to subcontract that expense.
Did you put a price for that permit on here? Is there a cost for that?
We do not have a, we do not have a cost for the permit.
So we're not charging anybody for these permits?
That's something that's going to be worked out in the regulations portion as to whether or not there will be a permit fee and what that fee would be.
And there's no penalties if they're not in compliance? We don't, I guess they don't get the permit if they're not in compliance, right?
So there's, exactly. They won't get permit if they're not in compliance. They're required to do their own self-inspections. Yeah, self-inspections with, there are certain requirements for, depending on the size and the type of project, where the city would be performing those inspections. If they're not in compliance, I believe the city can take enforcement action up until stopping the work. So through inspectional services, the city could actually stop the construction work until they get into compliance.
So my editorial comment, we're going to wrap this up because there's other folks who want to speak. Editorial comment on this is that it's become very challenging for our already strapped inspectional services department to do more work. We're providing more, now we're about to offer more mandates, deeper mandates, and more personnel. You mentioned in passing that you may look to hire some folks, maybe through, I'm not sure where you're getting the revenue from, but do you, maybe you have the revenue for that? Maybe you can offset that and provide from the budget department, the water department, to help offset a cost in inspectors? Maybe that's what you're thinking?
Exactly. The thought is it would be funded by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. And it may be subsidized by permit fees.
So we'll see that in the budget as we're going to be getting in a couple of months, right?
It will not be in this upcoming budget, well, because it will be privatized. It'll not privatize, it'll be contracted for the first year.
Okay.
So it will be done through a contract the first year, yes.
And my last point is, the last one is just document 240. That's probably the biggest nut of all, is stopping people from going ahead and being real lazy, taking their oil, taking their paint, and just dropping it down a catch basin. And that's going to be the biggest issue of all that's trying to grab. And again, that's, part of that is education, and you're talking about that. And let's face it, we have challenges in the city. There's so many, the education on so many things is so widespread. We're teaching all our kids about recycling and this and that and cross the street at the right places and, you know, not to cross the railroad tracks at certain times. There's education up in Ginyang about a lot of different things out there. And we're going to add that to it. And I know that, I'm not sure what we can do. You know, what I'm suggesting is that we're putting a lot of stress. It has to be done, but I'm not sure how successful it's going to be because we're having all these educational programs and they're overloaded. So the other part of that is enforcement, so the carrot enforcement, the stick enforcement, education and enforcement, excuse me. So I'm just wondering, you know, are we going, again, to have the inspectors out there do what they need to do when they catch people doing the dumping? Are we going to be serious about that and doing penalties and citations when we catch them? And that's a question for inspectional services, but you're working on this together. You're asking me or us to go ahead and support this document. But if it's toothless, we're not going to get what we're looking for out of this. And as much as we want to get those illicit connections and illicit behaviors under wraps, it's going to be hard. So I throw that out there. Me, you might have a comment, but it's something I have not lost sight of and I hope that, and I'm sure you have as well, we've got to really work on that.
Yeah, the only comment I want to say is that at the end of the day, the city is liable for violations of the Clean Water Act that may be as a result of not the city's own doing, but of particular residents, business owners. So it's in the city's best interest to pursue, you know, violators because at the end of the day, the city is liable.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Councilor Alvarez-Friedges?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to get up to speed on this. There was a statement made by, you prefer that I call you Zach? Okay. Zach made, caught my attention. And that was that the piping has to be corrected if it's not...
Correct. So if there is, if we find cases where non-stormwater services are being hooked up to a stormwater pipe, the property owner would have to replumb that pipe so that it's connected to a sewer line.
Is that a costly operation?
It can be costly, depending on the scenario. So every scenario is a little different.
So although they may have moved in and knew nothing about this, they're going to be held responsible for paying for the expense?
Correct. As it stands right now, the property owner would be responsible for the expense associated with that.
Okay, knowing the wackiness of our economy, some people are having a hard time, you know, keeping themselves afloat. Is there going to be any kind of assistance by way of maybe community development for those people who may have to do those kinds of corrections or repairs?
So it is absolutely something that we're exploring and providing some sort of financial assistance to those who cannot afford the cost of doing that. And that's going to, it's always going to depend on our budgets year by year and just the sheer number of quantity that we find out there. You know, if we find 1,000 homes in a year that require this, it may not be sustainable for the department to bear that cost. But if we find a handful here and there every year and we do have the budgetary capacity to do so, we would be providing, we're definitely open to providing that support.
Right. Now, many people have had trouble because they're the developers, which is why I'm glad to see that you have something here that addresses new development. My colleague, Councilor Brunel, was kind enough to fill me in that you have three different ordinances before us and although related, different because of who is at the core or who it affects. So, I mean, I'm glad that you want to make sure that business is doing the right thing, but I'm concerned about people who were not involved in when the development was taking place. And the developer got all the permits and our city, our city approved the development, not looking at or projecting that it would be a problem that there were no sewers in those streets. And, you know, it reminds me of the problems on Halsey Street, reminds me of the problem on North Boylston Street, et cetera, where peoples have put up pools and were never able to enjoy it because all of the stormwater was coming into their pool and ruined everything. So in a situation like that, is this going to be the responsibility of inspectional services to try to correct? Or would it be the responsibility of the water department to correct? Because we're talking about your separate money, different funds.
Correct. What you're referring to is essentially stormwater collection and detention. It's part of the services that the City of Lawrence has delivered to residents through the engineering department for many years. And more so recently, the Water and Sewer Department has been taking a bigger role in that, in the planning and development of that. As we, and as we develop these ordinances, we will be playing a bigger role in that. You know, these are obviously a case-by-case basis as development goes in. As reports of these issue come to my attention, to the attention of the rest of the city, you know, we'll investigate them and make the corrections to the best of our ability. There are situations in which we can, we will attempt to mitigate that to the best that we can. But we do realize that sometimes there are, you know, geographical, topographical limitations to, you know, just how much of that stormwater we can collect. But it's definitely something that my department is looking into.
Right, and I know that you're working towards correcting that problem by putting in new catch basins or sewers.
Yes.
The issue, though, that I have, and I think it's a serious one, is, you know, what are we going to do to make sure that the people who have already been hurt by this can get assistance and support from us? Because remember, it costs a lot of money to put in that pool. No one told them that this was going to happen. We have to accept the reality that when the inspectors went out, they didn't have any forethought about not having any sewers and how that would affect the new residents. So developers just built without really thinking about, you know. So I would like to make sure that the water department, perhaps hand-in-hand with inspectional services or community development, can assist these people, you know, who were so badly affected by the fact that we didn't have assist them to make sure that the stormwater was going to the right place and not into their pool.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would really seriously want us to take a look at that. Because it's more than one person that has been affected.
I absolutely agree about, you know, mitigating the issue and preventing it from happening further. But I think what you're alluding to right now is, you know, city liability for property loss sustained already. And I'm just, I'm not comfortable commenting on that because it just, it seems like it's better suited for our legal department to make comments on that.
I'm sure, but when people call and they have gone before the court and the court has favored their position, it shouldn't just take six, 10 years before we do something about it. But I know that people call you on these issues and it's good to direct them to the right place. But we're talking about, you know, I don't think, in my mind, I don't think it's the water department's responsibility, in my mind, because you guys weren't the ones that go out and look at the development, right?
Correct.
And whether or not, you know, the sewers are in place. Is that something that in the future is going to change? Is the water department going to go look at new development and help project what could happen in terms of the pipes?
So for the purposes of complying with our MS4 permit and the Clean Water Act, the answer is yes. We will be...
From here on...
For the purposes of complying, correct, with those. And the development of, again, of single-family homes, for instance, you know, developments that are, you know, that are not subject to these regulations, it is not the plan. It would continue to fall under the engineering department as it has since, you know, since the city's inception, you know. This has fallen under the inspectional services direct department and the engineering department to engineer these systems.
Right. And finally, because I know a lot of good questions were asked already, but the enforcement, the enforcement is going to come from who?
The enforcement would be by the enforcing authority, which is the Board of Health or its agents. So the Board of Health would designate agents such as engineering department, inspectional services, water and sewer department. But the ultimate authority is the Board of Health because these are matters of public health.
The Board of Health?
Correct.
Okay. Because I'm concerned that when people make complaints about an ordinance, that they refer to the police department for the ticketing as opposed to inspectional services doing the ticketing. And I think that's either a gain or past the buck of not wanting to enforce the ordinance. I don't know, but I think we should be clear with ordinances from here on who is responsible for doing the ticketing.
I agree.
Okay. Do you, because I just seen this today, I'm sorry, but do you indicate in these new or modified ordinances who's responsible for the ticketing?
For the enforcement? Again, it would be, it would be the Board of Health through the recommendations of their agents.
And that's clearly stated?
Correct, it is clearly stated.
That's why I apologized because I didn't...
Absolutely.
I didn't read the, and didn't have it to read until very recently. Okay, I want to thank you so much for answering my questions. I do want to take a couple of minutes to talk with you privately because I don't want to take our people's time for individual cases.
Council Bernard?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. No, I just, I want to thank Mr.
No, I just, I want to thank Mr. Pena for all of his time and effort on this. He definitely made time for me to sit down with him individually to go over this stuff prior to ordinance committee. Then he took a lot of time with the ordinance committee members, with the consultants, to go through this again with us. And one thing that I understood at those prior meetings that isn't coming out right now, that I just want to make sure I'm not either misunderstanding it or if I have it right, just to make sure everyone else is aware, my understanding was to get ourselves more in compliance with the current state codes, that we kind of need to adopt these ordinances in addition to everything else. As much as these are tougher regulations and it may be tougher for us to enforce them or tougher for some businesses to comply with them, not to say it's not optional, but the state is expecting these things from us, is that not?
Correct. The EPA is expecting.
Yeah.
And the, the good news is that we're only about 12 years too late because the permit has been in, in effect since 2003, the first MS4 permit.
So, I just wanted also to stress to all of us that I am supporting these items tonight. I encourage my colleagues to support them as well, but also just to keep in mind that these are EPA-required compliance documents, too. That's part of why we're adopting them. So, just want to make sure folks are aware of that. But thank you for all your work. You did a tremendous job on this.
Brian, I have a question for you. I know that we, in the past, required, and probably this is simply a renewal or an enforcement of, of the grease traps that are required in businesses like restaurants and things like that. Nevertheless, when, when the presentation was being made, I realized that on a daily basis, every one of us sitting here cook every day.
Yes.
And we dump grease, fat, and oil into the sewer. So, the amount of grease, fat, and oil that we individually dump on a daily basis will probably be multiplied a thousand times on what restaurants do. And my question to you is, is the Water and Sewer Department eventually going to come up with, with some suggestions and recommendations that are going to help us, individual homeowners? And, and again, we cook every day and very easily, very easily on daily basis, we fry something and we dump that grease right into the, into the sink.
Yep.
And it seems to me that we need to, our community, if we are going to stop pollution, we're going to have to get educated and, and maybe the water department can come up with some solutions and some advertising for us, the citizens, on how we can stop dumping grease, fat, and oil into our sink and to our sewer system because, again, the amount, we cook every day. There's no question about that. We cook every day and every day when we wash our dishes, when we wash our pans, we dump a substantial amount of grease, fat, and oil into our sewer system. And there has to be a way, and I know that requiring grease traps for every household would be, would be a headache, but, but maybe, who knows? Maybe, maybe the, the Water and Sewer Department can come up with some recommendations, some suggestions on what we as individual home can do and educate ourselves that, for example, if we fry something, Hispanics when they fry tostones or, or Italians when they fried...
Yo.
Yes. We take that grease, we do take that grease and dump it on the sink. And, and it seems to me that we need to create consciousness among ourselves on what to do with that grease. Rather than dumping it, maybe we can accumulate it and put them in a yard and, and then ask the, the DPW department on, on options on where we can take that so that rather than dumping that grease and oil and fat into the sink system, into the sewer system, we can cooperate on a daily basis to stop that. So, maybe you can come up with some flyers and suggestions that can, that can help.
So, yeah.
Because the, the amount is far over, oversee the amount of oil and grease that are produced by restaurants because everyone at home, 70,000 people, one time or the other, cook on a daily basis and we dump oil, grease, and fat into the...
Trash.
So, I'm, I'm hoping that eventually you guys will be able to come up with some suggestions for us on how we can cooperate and help the environment by collecting that grease and fat that we, that we use on a daily basis and then dispose of it properly rather than dumping it in the, in the sewer system.
Yep, you're absolutely right. So, our, our plan is to come up with educational material and educational program for the city, specifically for, for residents. It's very easy for, for one to dump the oil and not realize, you know, once it's out of sight, it's out of mind, not realize the impact that it has, if not on your own system, which is, you know, a possibility. I've been with the city for about 10 months now and on a daily basis, we get calls from homeowners whose toilets are not flushing or whose sinks are not going down. And nine times out of 10, we, we go there and it's an internal blockage in their line. So, a lot of times that oil won't even make it past their, you know, their front yard and it's blocking up their line. So, there are, there are costs to it, you know, and if it does make it down their line, it will get into our pipes and at some point it will, it will cause a blockage down, down the, down the road there or down the pipe. So, it's definitely something that we will be developing an educational program to reduce that because there are real costs to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. President. Commissioner Pena, I have one last question for Document 24014 specifically on the enforcement portion. When we look at section C and D, can you please help us describe a little bit further what the criminal penalty and the noncriminal disposition are? I'm reading it and it appears to make sense as to what it is, but I'm mostly interested in the, the criminal penalty portion of it.
So, yeah, you're absolutely. So, this section is a general enforcement section that talks about all of the different enforcement methods that the City of Lawrence has at their disposal. So, when we list these, we're not listing them as, as, you know, as they're going to be taken place in succession. The city may decide the enforcement method that is most appropriate from, from the list, but these are all the general ones that are at the city's disposition.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's not to say that the city will take, you know, one or more of these. It just means that these are, this is, it's the city's right to take these enforcement actions.
Okay.
As it seems appropriate. So, you're right, it does talk about, you know, there's fines, fees levied, that the city can, for instance, if, if there is a spill, so for instance, in a case where, say, a, a fast food restaurant, for instance, has a backup that causes a sanitary blockage or a cleanup that needs to take place in the catch basin because it's directly attributed to, to some contamination that, that is very evident, the city can recoup that cost. That, that is one of the options the city has. The city can, can levy fines and penalties as well as it sees fit. But again, the, the purpose of this isn't to enforce, enforce, enforce. The purpose is to educate and to change the mentality and change the way that, that we're doing business here in the city.
Okay. So, for, for the criminal penalty, you account as something that is deliberately made. So, I, I've made a choice to, to X, Y, or Z. So, that will account for a criminal penalty. A noncriminal disposition, on the other hand, is something that I'm probably not aware of. Is that...
Correct. And, and obviously, before any enforcement takes action in this ordinance or as attributed to any of the other ordinances, we would consult with our legal department here in the city.
Because there's something, I would like to make a suggestion for, under the, the criminal penalty. I understand, and thank you for the explanation you have provided us, but if you, if we look at the noncriminal disposition, it says that we will provide a written warning or a $100 fine or both. I, I will suggest that we do the same for the criminal penalty because the criminal penalty will go directly to, you know, a punishment of a $300 fine. I, I don't think that it will always be delivered that a person will, you know, dump oil, grease, you know, on their sink. So, I think that a, a warning will actually serve, if the intent behind this ordinance is to educate, I think that a warning will serve us more of an educational tool than going out there and finding the whole city.
Yeah, no, I agree 100%. So, so in your case, it's exactly what, what the, what the document does plan to do. So, in your case, the, the enforcement action that would be selected by the city would be D, would be to issue a warning and not, and not a fine. So, criminal penalty is essentially, as you alluded to earlier, is someone who is, who is purposefully being negligent or purposefully violating the rules. Now, of course, if the case is that, that it's not a result of negligence or criminal action, then they would fall into the noncriminal disposition and a, and a warning could be, could be issued instead of, instead of a fine.
I personally don't, if, if that's the case, again, I don't feel comfortable with how it is written because when we look at C, C is, you know, before D, it appears that it will be a criminal penalty on the get-go. And I think that even though I do understand the intent behind it, but if I were to read this, the first thing that will come to my mind is, you know, it's a criminal penalty, there's a violation, $300 fine. The second thing I will look at is the noncriminal disposition and I will say, well, I already have the criminal penalty to back me up that I'm able to give a fine worth $300, so I might as well just go with that. It will serve us as an opportunity to raise funds and educate the folks.
Yeah.
Because we will educate them the hard way, hitting them on the pocket. So, is that the intent behind it? No. But when I read it, do I look at it like that? Yes. I personally look at it like that. So, I, I will prefer to change that language so it's reflective of, and maybe all we, we, I will suggest all we do is adding, you know, a written warning or, or switching D and, and C.
Switching C and D?
Just so the first thing that we see is the noncriminal rather than treating this as a, as a criminal matter. I don't know if that's causing any confusion among councilors, but when I read it, when I was looking at it, the first thing that came to my mind is criminal dispos, penalty?
Yeah, I, I agree.
It's a criminal act.
How do you feel with that change?
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's nonsubstantial.
Do you want to make a motion that, to make those, that switch, that change?
Are we going, if we're voting individually, I could do it when we, when we vote on the matter.
Okay.
So, that way...
Okay.
Yeah.
That's on 230...
It's a functional...
I'm sorry, that's part of what?
240.
240? Okay. Okay. If there are no other comments, what I would like to do...
Councilor President, I do have one final question.
One final. Okay, go ahead.
Through you, Commissioner. When Methuen fixed their sewer system, we were gratefully affected and we had a big problem on Jackson Street, you know, that area. I, I don't believe that that was something that they knew what was going to happen, but we were still affected. So, in all these changes that you are making to our sewer system, what collaboration is taking place with, you know, our sister or our neighbors, neighboring cities?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so a lot of the Lawrence sewer and drainage lines enter bordering communities and vice versa, especially in Methuen. So, there will be, there will be the need to collaborate with them to make sure that, you know, that we're not sending, you know, polluted storm water to Methuen and vice versa, that Methuen is not sending polluted storm water to Lawrence and Lawrence is getting whacked for it by the EPA. So, there will be, there will be that open line of communication with them and working on that.
Because although we were affected, it's not like, nah, nah, now it's our turn to do it to you, you know? So, I think that knowing what we know now, that it'd be a great idea to make sure that, that we collaborate on, on those pieces.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and vote individually on each one of these items? So, the first vote is going to be taken on Document 23814. Okay? I would like to enter a motion to approve Document 23814.
So, move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Document 23914, a motion to approve.
So, move.
Move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to approve Document 23914. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Document 24014, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve with the following amendment.
Okay, motion to approve with the following amendment, and it has been properly second. Go ahead.
The amendment? The amendment, Mr. President, will be to change the order for the, I don't have the page in front of me right now. I believe it's the enforcement.
Under section 201130, enforcement.
Enforcement.
C and D.
That's correct. So, change section C and D, change the order of C and D. And I will also suggest that in D, we strike the last sentence and for the criminal penalty, it will be a $300 fine continuously after it happened a third time. So, be considered a criminal penalty on the third.
I'm sorry, what was the last, the last portion?
So, my suggestion, if, if the councilors don't agree with it, it's okay. It's not, not a big deal. But strike the, currently as we have it under D, strike the last sentence and add that to section C and treat it as such at that moment. Does that make sense?
Uh, so, yes, does that... I'd have to consult because I, I think that, that constitutes a substantive change to the document.
If, I will feel comfortable if it's not done, but I do, I do feel that we shouldn't look at criminal first. It should be a noncriminal matter first.
Also, can you repeat the change?
So...
So that we understand what the change is.
So, it will be to switch C and D.
Flip C and D.
So, if we, if we do that, I will also suggest that we strike down the last sentence currently in D and instead have it in section C as currently is.
Brian?
But if it's...
Any problem with that?
That works.
Okay.
Okay, there's no need.
Okay, so we are switching C and D and the penalty from D would be moved to C.
Yeah, just strike the last sentence there and treat it as a criminal penalty on the third violation forward.
So, it'll be stricken on the noncriminal disposition section?
Yes, and just leave it in, in the criminal penalty.
Remain on the criminal.
Okay, perfect. So, just treat it as a criminal penalty on the third forward.
Okay, the motion to approve Document...
How do you feel about that, Commissioner?
Yep. Looks like, looks like it'll work.
Okay.
The motion to approve Document 24014 with the recommended changes by Councilor Vasquez has been made and properly second. Are there any other questions? If there is none, let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Counselor, I would like to have a motion to take Document 4115 out of order.
So, move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Chairman of the Bojeron Finance Committee, Document 41, oh, I'm sorry, yes, let's do the public hearing first.
Document 412015, notice is hereby given to City Council to hold a public hearing Tuesday, March 17th, in City Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to get testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed appropriation transfer of funds as follows. From free cash reserves to capital projects fund, the amount of the transfer is $710,000. Funds to be appropriated to provide for the cost and expenses incurred in implementing playing fields in the City of Lawrence. Persons wishing to be here shall be afforded the opportunity as published on Tuesday, March 10th, posted on the city website on March 6th.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the appropriation of $710,000 for the playing fields improvement? Please identify yourself.
Hi, good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Maria Garcia. I'm here on behalf of the Lawrence Women's Softball League. We're here to support the $710,000 for the 24 fields that want to be redone in the city, not for selfish reasons, not so much for ourselves or the men's league, but... ourselves or the men's league, but more for our kids. I grew up here, I was raised here. My siblings live here, my nieces and nephews live here, and they use the parks. It's kind of sad to see when I grew up and what it looks like now. I mean, there's needles, there's drug bags, there's beer cans, there's trash all over the place, kids getting hurt with the gravel that they have currently. You know, so it's diminished throughout the years. If I'm not mistaken, those haven't been redone in over 30 or 40 years. So it would be really nice to, to see the new fields come along and have kids actually come out and play and not get hurt in the field. I think their safety and security is most important in this case. So that's why I'm here, to support the, the bill that's being proposed. You know, this city hasn't had any David Ortiz's coming out, any Roberto Clemente's coming out of here or anything like that. So we need to, I think we need to also support our kids and push them out to the streets, not in a bad way, but to the parks and the fields. So I think, I mean, that's, that's my saying in the $710,000. And I'll be here until it's passed. So your vote will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like, will you come forward, please, and identify yourself?
Hi, good evening. I'm Brian Thomas, the league president at South Florence Little League. And again, want to, you know, ask for you guys' support for that money to repair those fields. They need it. Our kids will feel better when they show up to those fields to play. Couple of them are in real bad shape. We do the best we can to be self-sufficient. We cut the grass, we whack, move dirt around to the degree that we can to keep the fields looking nice. But we desperately need some help now. My son plays there. See a couple of people whose sons play there. There's people out here whose sons play there and, and daughters play there. And we, we need the help now. We've done as much as we can do ourself to help those fields. We clean them up, you know, we fill trash bags up. We, we take care of our facility. It's a big facility, but we now need you guys' support. So it would be much appreciated.
Anybody else? Again, please identify yourself.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Cy Uliano Junior, president of Lawrence Central Little League in Beirut, and assistant state commissioner for Beirut baseball. This is a no-brainer. I, some of the things I talked at the subcommittee might be repetitious, but got to get it out. This is a no-brainer. You're here not only for the people, but for the kids of Lawrence. And this is, this is like the first time, you don't have to borrow money. You don't have to try to put in a grant and hope we're the city of Lawrence that, oh, we're gonna get money. You're gonna be able to do 24 ball fields. Think of that, 24 ball fields at the same time affecting the whole city. I've been, I've been coaching now, this is my 40th year, and I've probably played on all these fields. And they're definitely now a fact, there's safety concerns. If you see some of the ball, the infield, the clay is lower than the grass, the ball hits the edges, and they fly up and almost take the kids' heads off. It's like missiles flying. You need to, you need to take, take care of the fields. I've taken, I've taken teams to other areas of Massachusetts. They're amazed. They're amazed at the difference. And they always say, "Coach, why can't our fields be like that?" What's my answer? We don't have any money. Don't have any money to try to fix it. But you do have money available. And also, and I mentioned this at the subcommittee meeting, a lot of these fields, they're sacred ground, not only for the kids that, that use it, they're named after people that either contributed to Lawrence or fought in a war and gave their ultimate sacrifice. And the field, there's a field at Howard Park named after my dad. The city council 21 years ago named it after him. And I tell you, he wouldn't, knowing him, he wouldn't be happy how it looks. He'd be shaking his head about it. We need to do, we need to upgrade. You have the money, please. It's about time that all the fields get upgraded. And all you councilors, if you could step up to the plate, you can hit a home run for the kids of Lawrence. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Please identify yourself.
Nelson.
Nelson Ortiz, 30 Buzzwalk Street, Lawrence, Mass. I'm also work for the Recreation Department. I just want to, the city intends to reconstruct approximately 24 existing athletic fields. These fields will be constructed to be standard softball, baseball, and soccer field regulations. These ball fields are subject to use, to heavy use during the spring, summer, and fall months, and play host to numerous athletic supporting events. Due to funding constraints, low maintenance, material, and construction, efforts have been identified to ensure the integrity of the field and restore beautification through all the neighborhoods. I ask you to support this item on the, on the agenda, because I know you're gonna be happy, I'm gonna be happy, the citizens of Lawrence are gonna be happy, and so are the users who are gonna be happy. So thank you.
Okay, councilors, I would like to ask the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee to give us the recommendation from the subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This document came from the subcommittee with a favorable recommendation, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions for the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee?
Discussion, Mr. President.
I'm sorry?
Discussion.
Yes. Why don't you go ahead, Mr. LaPlante?
Is this a motion you want to...
Did you want...
Yes, I...
Continue, and then, Mr. LaPlante?
There's a third one over there.
Who?
I thought I saw some...
I seconded the motion.
I thought I heard discussion.
No, no, no. Discussion over there.
Are you going to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I just wanted to speak in, again, thank you to all the individuals that came out during the Budget and Finance Committee session. You did a wonderful job, and our kids deserve it. But I just want to go more in detail when it comes to the, in, in reference to the finances. So the, the request that has been presented before us is for the amount of $710,000, out of which 441,212 will be for the expenditure of clay, $25,000 will be for stone dust. That's a total of $466,212 for materials. $23,363 will be for seed, and $204,000 will be for labor. And finally, $16,425 will be for the expenditure of equipment. And that will give you the, the total amount. For anyone at home that would like this information, our schedule of free cash as of July 1st, 2014, we had $9,506,582 of certified free cash. With this being our first actual transfer for the, for the fiscal year, we're gonna have a, a remaining balance of, if it's approved tonight, which most likely will be, and I'm sure it will be, will be $8,796,582. So I just wanted to highlight that information before we took the vote, so members at home understood where the money was going to be spent specifically. And I also wanted to highlight that we received a letter from a former city council of David Abdu, who said that he was not going to be able to be present here. He was at a subcommittee meeting, and he discussed the importance of this. So I just wanted to point it out that he did write a letter of support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. LaPlante?
Thank you. So who said it was a no-brainer?
That's true.
It's a no-brainer. We should do that. But here's the brainer, right? The brainer is how are we gonna maintain those fields? So it's really good that we're gonna keep, we're gonna make these things really, really good for the next year, maybe too real easy. So the question is, is do we have the political will, the budget, to be able to make sure they're able to maintain these fields as we go forward on it?
We're gonna hold it.
So that's the question. And so it's not, it's, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna win the battle tonight. We just said you're gonna win the battle tonight, but are we gonna win the war on the fields as we go through the process beyond this? So whatever political juice you have, the connections that you have, talk to your elected officials, the mayor's office, the budget office, make sure that they're aware that this is something that you want to see in years going forward. Because, I mean, in my own area, for example, in South Florence East, we've had a brand-new field. I forget how many years ago, maybe 10 years ago now. And that thing, because of budget issues, et cetera, it went downhill. You would never know today that that was one of the newer fields in the entire city. The fact is, is that it is. But now it needs more help, because we've been not been able to maintain it. So anyway, I throw that out there. I am, as a parent of a little leaguer or a couple of little leaguers, I'm happy to see that our fields are gonna be brought up to speed again. That's fantastic news. And I want to commend those of you who are pushing so hard, because it's not easy to constantly be out there fighting the fight to try to do these things. So thank you for the advocates, for doing what you're doing, and gaining the attention of the proper people to make this thing happen. So I support you, and I hope that we can continue this as we go on in years two, three, four, and five. Thank you.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez, and then Counselor Armonte.
That was, that was my question.
Oh, okay.
About the maintenance of...
Counselor Armonte.
Thank you so much. It's a great thing that you brought up about the maintenance as to what's gonna happen to the parks that we implemented into our city. Because I know, I mean, this is a no-brainer, like I would said before, because these are our parks, and we do, in our budget, put money out for our parks. Now, and I'm going to approve this. Now, let's talk about the parks that are proposed to come into our city, to allocate other businesses that will be coming into our city. And I would like to know where the money's gonna come from to uphold and upkeep those parks that will be coming into our city. So it's a great thing that you brought that up, Counselor LaPlante. But for the parks that do belong to us, we will definitely be able to continue to put them in our budget because they are there. Now, we should be a little more cautious about letting other parks that will be implemented into our city, they will be coming down in front of us really soon, because they want to be able to come into our city just because money was allocated through grants to come into our city. But guess what? Where's that money gonna come from for those new parks that are being supposedly implemented in our city, when you have brought up the question that we obviously cannot keep the ones that we do have? So I want to keep everybody here on their toes as to make sure that if we are here talking about the parks that we cannot uphold at this moment, that we do not let any new parks be implemented in our city, where we're gonna have to put them in our budget, and the citizens of the city of Lawrence are gonna have to uphold and keep these clean also. So any new grants that are coming into our city to beautify supposedly our city, but are just going to accolade other businesses to make them more fruitful, we need to make sure that, just like our Counselor LaPlante here said, we need to find out where the money is gonna come from to make sure that we keep that clean, and implement what we need to implement into these new things that want to come into our city that the budget does not have a line item for at the moment, and that our citizens of the city of Lawrence are going to have to pay for. But with all that being done and said, and a lot of people here are just looking at their papers because they know exactly where I'm coming from. And all of you will know where I'm coming from when there's people here coming in front of us, wanting a vote from us to say that we want a new park here in Lawrence, when we can't afford it. When it's just going to be something nice that's gonna look nice in the background of the new companies that are trying to come into our city and grab a TIF from our city that doesn't have a line item on the bottom that says, "You need to comply with this TIF if you run out on us within the five years," and leave us holding $500,000 or $1 million in taxes of revenue that we did not collect, because we, the city of Lawrence, want to give you a TIF. Got me? So make sure that everybody here, and everybody here knows what I'm talking about. It's gonna be coming in front of us in a couple. So thank you, Counselor LaPlante, for letting us know that, you know, it's hard for us to upkeep the parks that we do have, but just make sure that we don't vote for the parks that we don't need. Remember that. Thank you.
Are there anybody else? Any other counselor? I have a, go ahead.
I just want to share, Mr. President, that I too am concerned that there's been talks about possible increases in taxes. And I, I'm going to vote in favor of this, of the, of these parks and beautifying the park and accepting the money. But I think that we need to, with your assistance, come up with a plan for how we're going to make sure that the dollars that are allocated to, for the maintenance of those parks actually is, is placed to do that, so that you're not feeling like, "Oh, my God, look at these parks, how they look," and we only have, we'll have them nice for one year. You know, we would like it to be, to continue to look good for our children. And, you know, the thing that hurts me the most is when I, when I look out and I see all these parents and people, coaches, and sponsors that I've seen year after year after year, you know, really holding in there and, and, and making it happen for the kids, even, even when it is messed up. You go out there and you try. But what we need to do is to make sure that we have a plan with the Department of, of Public Works that, to make certain that those parks are maintained, especially during the time that, that they're not in use for, it's not the season. But we have to make sure to maintain it for when it is the season. So I don't know how we're gonna go about it. We need your help in doing some thinking, okay? Because if we use the reserve cash that we have now, and then we're gonna look to increase taxes, that's gonna be hard. So thank you, Council President, for allowing me to, to say those words, because I am concerned about the maintenance. But that doesn't mean that I'm not voting in favor of using that money now. But just have in mind that there is gonna be a request to increase property taxes. And that's something that's gonna hurt, because we really, you know, a lot of us are just paycheck to paycheck. And knowing that that's how it's going to be, we then have to make sure that how the money is allocated, if it's for parks, then let's see it. Let's see it. If there's a line item, this is for park maintenance, well then let's see it. Let's see how they're being maintained, that that money is actually being used for that cause, okay? And we need you to keep an eye on it. All right? Thank you, Council President.
Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, was enough information provided by the administration in regard to the parks, which parks were going to be affected on...
Yes. Mr. President, I think that information that was provided is sufficient, actually more than enough to be able to make a decision. I would like to thank both Nelson Ortiz, as well as Mr. Anello, for providing us with a detailed graph, or a detailed chart that has, you know, even the square footage, footage, and as to what everything will cost. So it was very, very detailed. So I do feel very comfortable with it.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselors, let's take a vote on this item, item 4115. A motion has been made, and it has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Counselors, item 2415 through item 3015, a, an outside legal opinion has been requested by the mayor as to the legality or conflict with certain parts of the city charter. A legal opinion is gonna be rendered to our city attorney. And what I would like to do is that I would like to table all those documents. Yes, we're, we're gonna open the public hearings first, but then I would like to enter... Yes, we're, we're going to open the public hearings first, but then I would like to enter a motion to table, pending a review of the legal opinion by our city attorney and possibly changes to the ordinance. I have been a very strong critic of the mayor in the past and present on violations of the city charter. And I want to make sure that we don't do the same thing and, and create ordinances that are going to be contrary to our city charter, okay? So, we're going to open the public session and then I'm going to enter a motion to, to table each item individually. Mr. Clerk? Yes, we're going to do it as a block. So, why don't we read the public notice? Why don't we read the public notice and hear from the audience on any one of these items? And then I'm going to enter the motion to table as a block, items 2415 through 3015. Mr. Clerk?
Document 242015, notice hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing March 17, 2015, 200 Clement Street, 7:00 P.M. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input by adding a new section to the municipal code 244-200, senior elections accounting clerk to the city clerk, as published on March 10. Next document?
Yes.
Document 252015, notice is hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 17, 2015, in council chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment by deleting section 216040 of the code and inserting in its place instead an amended code to that section, essentially granting the city clerk the appointment authority to the position of assistant city clerk. That matter was published on March 10. Document 262014... 15, excuse me. Notice is hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing Tuesday, March 17, council chambers, 7:00 P.M. Purpose of said hearing is to obtain public information and input concerning proposed amendment by adding a new section 2.16050, addressing the position of senior clerk to the city clerk, appointment by the city clerk to that position. All persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. Document 272015. Notice is hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing Tuesday, March 17, 2015, in council chambers at 7:00 P.M. Purpose of said, said hearing is to obtain information, public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinance by deleting section 2.20070 of the code concerning confidential secretary and office manager for the office of the city attorney and inserting a new section establishing the position subject to the appointment and approval of the city attorney. Again, as published as on March 10. Document 282015, notice is hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 17, 2015, in council chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information concerning deleting section concerning confidential secretary to the city council and amending that section and placing that matter on the same section 244010, establishing within the legislative branch a position of confidential secretary to be appointed by the city council. Document 29 of 2015, notice is hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 17, 2015, in council chambers at 7:00 P.M. In order to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning revision of the city ordinances by deleting section of the municipal code concerning confidential secretary slash administrative assistant to the city attorney and inserting in its place a new section 2.20.080, confidential secretary administrative assistant subject to the appointment and approval of the city attorney. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. Document 302015. Notice is hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing on March 17, Tuesday, in city council chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather information, important public input, excuse me, public information input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by deleting the following section of the municipal code concerning the position of assistant registrar coordinator of Spanish-language election information program under said code section and inserting in its place a new paragraph establishing the section to be appointed by the city clerk upon the approval of the city council. All matters were published on March 10 in the newspaper and posted on the city website on March 6.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf or against any one of these items? Again, I would like to remind you when you speak that this item is going to be table pending legal opinions and review by our city attorney. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Kathy Ronge, 32, Drakett Street. So, this is, I, I, we're doing all of them here. Right now, as far as the accounting clerks, you know, whoever appoints them, if there's an open position, the city clerk appoints a accounting clerk for elections or for the city clerk's office. Those are union positions. They're clerks, clerks are clerks. They can start getting bumped and stuff. So, you know, I, I don't know, you know, how you're going to resolve this stuff with the union. Secondly... Hold on a minute. I, I think it's a little silly that the city council has anything to do about appointing the confidential secretary for the attorney's office. I, I think that's nuts. You know, I mean, I think politicians should be as far away from the hiring process as possible. And you're trying to get more and more in there. And I mean, I think the mayor shouldn't be, that, you know, you should hire the top-level people and you should let department heads and the personnel directors hire the other people. That's what you should do. You shouldn't be approving confidential secretaries for the attorney's office. Secondly... Thirdly, the assistant registrar coordinator of Spanish-language... Again, what business does the city... I just don't think the city council should be, be so ingrained in the elections department being that you're politicians. I, in fact, think the city clerk should appoint a man. What about that board of registrars? That is who is supposed to be essentially overseeing the elections department. Maybe they should approve them or something. But I just think it's crazy for the city council to be doing that. And if we could put one extra condition on the assistant registrar slash coordinator of Spanish-language election information program, why don't we make it that they should be a citizen? I mean, you would think that you wouldn't have to say that. But we know in this town, you do. I mean, I just think it's ridiculous because we have had non-citizens working in the elections department. I guess you can't do anything about clerks because clerks are clerks. But you can do something about the assistant registrar. Registrars are supposed to be registered voters. And that's, you know, all I'm saying. I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience? Mr. Russell?
Okay, Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street. I do apologize, you're a fast-talking city clerk. Went right past me on a couple of the questions. The election senior accounting clerk position review, what does that entail?
Mr. Clerk? Would you like to answer the question?
Could you ask it again?
The 2415, the election senior accounting clerk, position review. What exactly is that about?
This is it.
Okay, I mean, is, is his position going to be reviewed with possible removal or what?
No, the publication is the review.
There is a possibility, there is a possibility, though, that downstairs below your office, they could go from three people in that office to two people?
No, the, the reason for the proposed ordinance is to clarify the ordinance. They're not clarified.
Okay. All right. Now, let's see. Oh, again, I, I don't know if I heard you correctly, but on 2715, did I hear some mention of Spanish being involved in rewording of that?
I'm sorry, I got distracted. I apologize.
Been a long night, I know.
2715.
2715. Confidential secretary of the city, I'm sorry, 2815, confidential secretary of the city council. Was there anything mentioned about Spanish in that? Like I said?
There she is.
If anything was mentioned about what?
When he was, when Mr. Maloney was reading the, the proposed ordinance or the change or whatever, I thought I heard something about Spanish.
No.
Okay. I apologize then.
There she is, right there.
All right. That's all.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak to these changes? If none, counselors, I would like to enter a motion to table item 2415 through 3015 as a block pending review of legal opinions. No move. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, let's continue with document 1915.
Document 19... Document 19, 2015, notice is hereby given to City Council hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 17. I'll slow down for Dick. 200 Clement Street at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning petition presented by National Grid to the city, asking the city of Lawrence by interway city council to grant permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including all sustaining and protecting fixtures that it may find necessary according to a plan filed with the city clerk's office on Prospect Street. That plan dated December 29. All construction to be in accord with the plan as submitted. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. A list of butters provided by the assessors office. Notice was sent a week in advance of said hearing to all butters.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience on this item? Please identify yourself.
Hello, my name's Joe Aranteli from National Grid. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything, okay?
Counselors, Mr. Russell?
Again, this is the only time we get to address anybody from National Grid. What is the status on the double pole situation in Lawrence?
We should be getting a review.
That's wonderful. We should be getting a review since somebody give us numbers? Reviews are nothing.
No, no. Again, we still have it in the agenda that periodically we're going to get a report from National Grid as to the status of the double pole. I believe the last report that we received was, was it November of last year?
It was the fall, yeah.
The fall of last year, so we are due for a report.
I, I understand that. I also realize that National Grid is not entirely at fault. There's also Comcast, there's also Verizon, they have their fingers in the pot. If they don't want to do something, you're going to have, listen to people like me, pick on... You're going to have me pick on you. But, I mean, I think the citizens of Lawrence are entitled to an answer. Numbers, no, no reviews, just numbers. You know, is there 77 sets of double poles in the city or what? And why? Why is there a delay in getting rid of them? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter? If there is none, counselor, what is your wish?
Make a motion to approve the proposal.
There's a motion to approve?
Discussion, if I may?
Hold on. There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second discussion.
Oh, you're second, I'm sorry.
Discussion. I will.
Okay, discussion?
Thank you, Council President.
Yes.
I would like to know if I could please have the gentleman that came up from National Grid?
He's over there.
Can you please come to a microphone?
Thank you.
One of the counselors have a question.
What was his name again, sir?
Joe Aranteli.
Joe. I'm Sandy, I'm the city councilor for that district. Nice to meet you this evening.
Nice to meet you.
I just wanted to know, so Prospect Street, that would be 50 Prospect Street, the hospital?
That's, that's right in front of the hospital.
50 Prospect Street, would that be more towards the Marston Street area? Or are you talking about 50 Marston Street? Is that building going to be, because it says here, "Just allow for existing doctor medical center to be demolished and a new surgical center to be constructed."
It's a hospital, it's not...
Yes, that's the hospital.
Would that be 50 Prospect Street? So, which is, which is, what I'm concerned about is which is the center that's going to be demolished? And where's the new surgical center going to be constructed?
Dotted lines? It's at the corner of Prospect Street and General Street? At that...
So, it is 50, it is 50 Prospect Street, the building that's going to be demolished?
Yeah, yes.
And then the two poles are going to be...
It's just being rebuilt, so that they're taking it down. The building is in the same spot.
So, those two poles which are going to be... Put across the street, those are going to be new poles, it's not something that's going to be moved?
Yep, they're going to be permanently removed to the other side of the street.
Moved to the other side of the street?
That's all they're doing is getting the two poles. We're relocating them so the hospital can get in and do its work.
Okay.
So, so Lawrence can get a new...
Now, for this work to be, to be done where it's at, is this, is this, because two poles to be moved? I mean, there's going to be, you know, traffic being delayed and all kinds of stuff. Do you have like a time of day where you're going to do this kind of stuff? Because obviously through that area, we're having a lot of traffic going through at certain times of the day, especially where there is the charter school that's right there. So, I want to make sure that we don't have a lot of traffic. What time of day is this going to happen? How long is this going to take place? What are the inconveniences that this is going to cause the city, especially where this is a one-way up and one-way down, even though it goes into Marston Street, which is, and what's to be called the sort of a inner-city highway type of thing because it comes right into the city? I just wanted to know like if this is going to cause, and what is it going to cause traffic-wise for us here in the city? And are you going to be using our police officers and who's going to be paid for? How is that going to be paid for duties on, on, if you're going to be using our police officers or how is that going to work?
Through, through, obviously, be safety officers, police detail.
Police detail officers.
All the time.
Which National Grid is going to...
National Grid would, would obtain, the hospital would pay for it.
Okay.
Because it works for the hospital.
Yes.
To be done. But, so as far as traffic-wise, they will control traffic completely. It will always be police details present while we're doing it. I would assume there will only be a day of work. Because it's just putting the two poles up and then another day taking the poles down.
I was just concerned as to what time of day would be because where, where this is being shown, and it's, it's right here, 50 Prospect Street, and right here, there's a parking lot that goes up on the hill. And so, the entrance way right across from 50 Prospect Hill is up through here and down to here, through here for the traffic to come in and out for our students, for that charter school to be picked up, dropped off, buses. There's really no visibility on that curb that goes around. So, I want to make sure that we know when it's going to happen. Is it something that maybe could be done? Obviously, I'm probably fishing out of the pond at this moment if I'm asking you to please try and do something on the weekend, which is probably not going to work. But during the day, that there is a, is a serious problem only because of the, the parents and the students coming in and out of that area where it's low visibility coming around that corner where there's high traffic, especially where we put a school where... It's, it's such a small and dense area. So, I wanted to make sure that what's happening in that area at that moment or on that day is not going to affect that school, the parents trying to get in and out of there, and the safety of the students to go to that school.
True. Well, we get back to the city clerk when we have a planned outage and make sure the city clerk could, you know, go to the council and say, "This is what City, National Grid's planning on doing." And then if you don't, you know, if you disagree with that timing, we could work it out.
If we can do something where the city clerk gets a hold of me and lets me know what's happening with the, with the information that you will be providing, I would greatly appreciate that and only because the safety of our students and the kids and the youth of our city is my priority and responsibility, especially it being in my district. Outside the district, I'm all for it, but it, that's a blind, you know, a blind, a blind area. You know, you work for National Grid, obviously, you're here giving your face words. You know the area, you know what I'm talking about. So, therefore, I just want to make sure that things are secure and safe for the kids that are going about and, and around that area.
True, it's a general, it's a general concern for everybody.
Yeah. All righty. Well, thank you so much, Joe, this evening, and I look forward to speaking with you in regards to that whole securing that area and making it safe.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Counselors, let's take... Go ahead.
Thank you. So, are you going to be doing any digging there?
Yeah, for the two poles.
Yep.
Digging, are you gonna be...
Oh, we gonna be digging? Um, not, not really. Um, you will be drilling the sidewalk.
Right.
Right, with a boring truck. So a digger truck will come in, put a hole in it, get a pole, drop it in, fix the sidewalk, then we'll do, you know, twice, then we'll do all work.
Mm-hmm.
Go across the street, take the power down.
Take that same pole across the street?
Take the, yep, take those out, take the two old poles out. Um, I'm assuming they're gonna be, I'm assuming it's one thing, I don't know if they're gonna be doing repair of the sidewalk there or if the hospital's just gonna take it over and block it off and fence it off. If they don't fence it off, National Grid would obviously fix the sidewalk.
Yeah, we want it fixed.
Yeah, well, obviously, but if the, if the, if the hospital's putting heavy-duty equipment on it and, and doing equipment work around it, they would block it off.
Okay. Um, yeah, 'cause it's not just where the hole is, it's also the equipment that puts on pressure to the street and the sidewalks. Um, and I want to make sure that we do it properly because in the past, we have gotten, um, this is something that your colleague has already heard, but being that, that you haven't heard it, I wanna make sure you hear it. Um, in the past, there has been the kind of work that's been shoddy and then the hole, it begins to, you know, break and causes hot holes or the sidewalk, it doesn't maintain itself, um, the way that it should. So I wanna make sure that that job is done properly and that someone oversees that job. Now, are there, on those poles, are there any renters? Do you have any renters on that particular pole?
On those poles, there's a, are they J O poles? They're joint-owned poles, so, so Verizon would also be on them.
Mm-hmm. So, um, do you think there's gonna be any interruption of service in the area?
No.
Okay, so you won't...
We'll, we'll have the power up on the, the new poles and disconnect all of them.
So there won't be any interruption of service to the residents?
No.
All right, and, um, I want to reiterate what, um, councillor Almonte has said. We always say it, you know, uh, very important, even though some people have the idea that , uh, everybody that lives in Lawrence doesn't work in its own welfare, um, I wanna make sure that, you know, that that's a myth. There are a lot of people that work and during rush hour, uh, it's better for anyone who's doing any public work to be doing it at that time.
Sure, and we'll let the city clerk know before we do any work.
Right, and we've asked in the past and, um, your, your company has, um, has honored that request, so I'm asking that you do that again.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh, councillors, uh, there is a motion on the floor and it has been properly second. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Uh, document thirty-three fifteen.
Document thirty-three, two thousand and fifteen, notice is here by giving the city council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seat, uh, seven P M. in city council chambers. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning petition presented by and on behalf of National Grid of North Andover requesting the city Lawrence by and through its city council members to grant permission to excavate public highways and run maintained underground electrical conduits together with sustaining and protecting fixtures as the company may deem necessary. Said notice was, uh, drafted from a plan submitted by National Grid dated January fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, attached to the notice and concerns location at, on Trinity Street. Persons wishing to be heard, heard shall be afforded the opportunity and notice to, a list of butters provided by the assessors' office was sent by first-class mail to all butters, um, one week in advance of this hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this document, thirty-three fifteen?
I do enjoy, until you, National Grid, I miss you all. If anybody has any questions, feel free.
Uh, councillors, uh, I would like to enter turn a motion to approve the document.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yeah. All the same things that we talked about before apply to this one.
Sure, this would be a little easier, it's a dead-end street, nowhere to go, there's no traffic.
It'd be easy there, and also you're not over on, you're not near Jackson or any of those busy streets, yeah.
It's just an apartment building at the dead end, they had overhead service, but the overhead's too small to operate their service, so we have to go underground with it.
Yeah, so, uh, how deep is the digging gonna be for this underground?
It'll be about three feet down.
About three feet?
Crossroad.
How dangerous?
Of course, there's gas pipes and stuff like that, until we open up the road, you don't know what it is, so.
Yeah, so it's kinda dangerous too, so I hope you repair that as quickly as you can so we don't have any kids falling in on...
Yeah.
All right, well, like I said, everything we said before applies.
Thank you.
Thank you, council president.
Don't, don't go. Uh, when policies are generated by the, uh, National Grid, uh, are they generated locally by region and is there a regional directors that create policies that affect, for example, the city Lawrence?
Good question.
Can you say that again?
When policies are created that affect a whole city or a region.
Okay.
Who is responsible for implementing those policies or generating those policies locally in our region?
Well, that would, that would be, that would be between the city, 'cause obviously you're saying policies of National Grid.
Yes.
Yeah, so what will happen is that would be, um, the city would meet with National Grid, whatever policies they had.
But who would they meet with?
Oh, oh, it would be business services, so...
Is that person a regional director of some sort?
I can get it for ya, if you want, I can get it back to you, you said, you said directly, or if I get back to the city clerk, whatever you like me to do.
Will you please, uh, can you get that information for, for us and give it to us, our, uh, city council clerk?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's, uh, there was a motion already and approve, and second, uh, let's take a vote, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, document seventy-nine fifteen, I'm going to refer that document to the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, now let's go into committee report and I would like, uh, where's the madam chair of the Budget and Finance Committee? I'm, I'm sorry, of the, of the ordinance. Uh, let, I'm sorry, let's take, uh, document fifty-seven fifteen first. Uh, Budget and Finance Committee Chairman, uh, Mr. Ken, Mr. Vazquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The, uh, document fifty-seven fifteen, it's a previous year invoice for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, um, on the amount, the total amount is one thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, there, there is a total of, uh, five invoices that have been submitted to us. The first one is, uh, to William Collins for board meetings on the amount of three hundred and forty dollars. The second one is for W B Mason for office supplies on the amount of six hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. The third is for the Office of Inspector General, um, on the amount of one hundred dollars. And the third and four, fourth are for, the fourth and fifth, I'm sorry, are for Grainer, uh, both of them, uh, for the purchase of batteries, one on the amount of two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, and the other one on the amount of three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, this came from the subcommittee with no recommendation as we were unsure, uh, from which account it was gonna be taken out of, and I would like to make a motion to present it as a committee report. And then I'll make a motion to approve and explain why.
There's a motion to, uh, take document fifty-seven fifteen as a committee report. A motion has been made, I is a second. Second?
Yes.
Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, this document.
Motion is being made to approve document fifty-seven fifteen, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion has been second. I have a question, Mr. Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, I, I have made comments before that we create a, an ordinance or a policy, uh, I believe in two thousand and ten, where we, uh, prohibit the payment of invoices that were not submitted on a timely basis unless there was a strong justification for it. Uh, was there information provided as to why, uh, these invoices were not submitted on time?
Um, no.
I think they're writing the wrong address, Kansas, other, number Lawrence area, something like that.
For this particular ones, no, that was a previous invoice that we had already paid. Um, this invoice is somehow, Mr. Ranello is here tonight, I don't know if he might have a better response.
Mr. Ranello, can you, uh, come forward, please?
I don't think that they made it. I do not have an answer for...
Mr. Ranello, just to refresh everybody's, uh, memory, uh, two thousand and ten, this council approved a policy or an ordinance, I don't remember which one it is, but that we will not, we will prohibit the payment of any invoices that were not submitted, uh, for the, during the fiscal year that it was supposed to be submitted unless there were some, uh, uh, reasonable and acceptable, uh, excuse of why these invoices were not submitted, uh, on the appropriate fiscal year. Uh, what information do you have for us on these invoices?
Well, that's a city ordinance and also state law, so that's the purpose of this vote is the, the department head needs permission from the city council to pay a current year, uh, to use current year funds to pay a prior year invoice, because the invoice was required to be paid in the prior year budget. If this was a normal course of action, people could, uh, start, uh, you know, not paying bills and pushing it to the following year. This is an inadvertent mistake by, uh, by Commissioner Blanchett. There's a, a listing of five invoices. I know he wrote a letter to the council, I don't have a copy of the letter to the council to get on the council agenda, but in that letter he was supposed to indicate, uh, it was a, um, it was an administrative error not getting him paid on a timely basis.
So the problem was within, not outside?
That's right.
Okay.
Just his...
Uh, there is a motion on the floor to approve the payment of those invoices, uh, and it has been properly second. If there are no other questions, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Uh, continue, Mr. Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee with, uh, document sixty-five fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document sixty-five fifteen is, uh, it's an acceptance, acceptance to a grant, uh, from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Uh, the grant is for apnea of use prevention, uh, collaborative on the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for a period of, uh, uh, five and a half years, starting , uh, January first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Motion to approve?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve and also, motion to approve?
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and properly second to approve document...
Discussion?
I'm sorry?
They comment, not a discussion.
Okay, uh, to approve document sixty-five fifteen, uh, councillor Almontes.
Uh, thank you, council president, and for everyone at home that doesn't know what this, um, grant does, um, Harold Nagum and Delilah Rivera, um, and other people from the city, work with the youths, with the youth along with, um, Officer Gary Nancy. What we do is we, well, myself being included in doing shoulder taps, sticker shocks, um, we provide surveys, um, to provide, to, to see what the needs are that we need to service. And we visit schools, hospitals, organization, churches, and companies because what we do is we explore into the synthetic drugs, risks, and opiate use, and we, that's what we use that grant money for, to allow us to be able to let people know what it does and what it, and what it affects. A lot of the synthetic drugs that are being brought into is, are not the drugs that everybody has grown up around and that are at the, at your street corner. These are the ones that are available at our common stores, which the kids can go into and get a synthetic marijuana, which does not show up on a urine test. And these are the, the things that kids are using nowadays because the parent won't know about it, it'll continue to be part, you know, of, of their normal lifestyle, but these are the things that we don't know anything about and can affect your lifestyle and it can affect your health and can affect your well-being for the rest of your life. Um, upon that, we also implemented and, and support intervention and prevention, and through the Great Lawrence Family Health Center, we were able to train and obtain, um, Narcan for the, um, overdoses of heroin and other opiates that happen within our city, but because of, there was a grant for fifty thousand dollars that, um, went unsigned that could have came to the city Lawrence for Narcan, um, because it just went unsigned. And I just wanted to make sure that that goes into public record because that was a fifty thousand dollar grant that could have been signed by somebody here in our building, that wasn't, it could have saved a lot of lives. And I hope you're listening tonight. Thank you.
Uh, councillors, there is a motion on the floor, uh, and it has been properly second, unless there is anybody that would like to speak. Uh, if there, there's none, uh, let's take a vote, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Uh, councillors, we're gonna jump from the ordinance committee reports into the housing committee report, uh, by request from the chairman of the ordinance committee. Uh, so, Mr. Plant?
Yep. Take it on. I'm ready to go. So a document, first document number three fourteen oh five, House Committee voted by unanimous vote to send up to the full council, favorable recommendation, dispose of the property located at ninety-eight Springfield Street, uh, to Maria Garcia, one second. Maria L. Garcia for the sum of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with the conditions included. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second. There's a motion on the floor and it has been properly second to sell the property of ninety-eight Springfield Street to Maria Garcia in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. If there are no questions, I would like to enter turn a motion, uh, I would like to take a vote, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue, Mr. Chairman.
House Committee, this is document number three zero two oh eight, the House Committee voted with a favorable recommendation, dispose of the property of seventy-four Springfield Street. To Rafael Mejia for the sum of three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars with the condition attached therein. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to sell seventy-four Springfield Street to Rafael Mejia in the amount of three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue.
Document number sixty oh nine, this, uh, House Committee voted with a favorable recommendation to, to withdraw the previously approved of purchase or disposition of one forty-three Hancock Street, um, to rescind the vote taken on eight, August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, and to make that in the form of a motion.
The motion is to...
A motion has been made and properly second, uh, to...
I'll explain in a second. To rescind, to rescind the vote taken on August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen.
To extend the vote on the sale of one forty-three Hancock Street to Lisa Liranzo, I suppose.
Yeah, this, uh, the, the individual was, um...
L- Lisa?
No, 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 she works for us.
No?
Aristides Esubio? Aristides, did I pronounce that right?
Aristides Elserio.
I'll explain, if, if there's a second, I'll explain the reason.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and properly second.
Yeah, so the reason why this took place, this is very unusual, um, they, this, the house, the, uh, the plant department has for, for several years now tried to get a closing date on this one piece of property that we sold to them, and they have not, uh, been forthcoming on the closing, and so this property has remained dormant, we have not been able to close the sale, and because of that, the, uh, the, uh, plant department has asked that we rescind the vote so they could put this back out to bid again.
That's right. Council president?
Yes.
I, I wanna support my, uh, chair in the housing committee. Excuse me, um, for many years, we've discussed, uh, keeping tabs on what happens to the properties that are allocated, and councillor Toomey had been part of those discussions in the housing committee in the past, and we wanted to make sure that things were actually happening, because we didn't want these either empty lots or dilapidated properties not be intended to when the, you know, when the idea is to make sure that we beautify and strengthen the appeal of the city. So, I am very happy that for once, it was actually done. They actually went out there and saw that it wasn't, that nothing had been done for three years. The same situation happened in other cases where I was part of it, I wanted to have more discussion, and people had said, oh, no, it's so, it's urgent, it's urgent. Four years went around, and it was, it was, nothing happened with the property. There's another property, similar thing, nobody wanted to have real discussion around it, and to date, nothing's been done with the property. So, it's important that we take notice of what's happening now, and I, I commend the, the, the planning, the planning department and Ms. Sonj and, and Mr. McCarthy, because I think this is the way that we need to go. We need to stand firm and tell people, hey, we're not fooling around. When we say we want to strengthen the appeal of our city and attract more businesses and attract more middle-class families, we mean it. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to make one last point on this, and I just want to be precise in my language, and I may not have been with the explanation. The reason why this is being rescinded is because the butter was supposed to own the property that they were going to acquire, and they never had ownership of that property, so it was never in a butter acquiring it, and because of that, they weren't able to merge the two properties, which was the intention of the council back several years ago now. So, because of that, and the, apparently, the applicant understands this and is fully aware of what is happening here this evening, so I want to make sure that I was precise in what was happening rather than...
Thank you.
More general.
Can you say that again?
It's in your packet, actually, but I'll repeat. So, the applicant was supposed to be in a butter.
Okay.
And they never, the, the applicant never owned the property they claimed to have owned, so they're never in a butter to that property, so you can't merge, you can't merge both of those properties. It was a yard sale program, I believe, and that's part of the rationale, you have to be in a butter for that, and so because of that, they weren't able to have the closing because they weren't able to merge both of those properties, and that was one of the conditions of merging both of the parcels.
But they never did what they were supposed to do with the property?
Yes, they never, they didn't merge, they didn't merge it, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, always be more precise, you're, you're right, with your comments earlier.
No, I just want to make sure, because, you know, I had heard you also in the past talk about similar issues regarding people actually doing what they say.
Okay, let's take...
Just one small comment before we go into, there are other properties here that our chairman of the housing committee is going to present. I just want to let people know that it had not have been for our mayor in hiring Liza Lizardo, Saint Onge, that the stuff that's been happening with the properties, getting stuff done, going after people who are not complying, from an antiquated system into somewhere where it's savvy, novel and the right thing to do, this was the right person to definitely hire for the system. I am saying it with whole heart and great expectations, do not overwork my girl, but she's, she's a, she's, she's a golden egg. This girl's a golden egg in that department. She's doing a super stupendous, great job, I cannot even give, start to give her accolades for the stuff that she's done. It takes somebody from outside the box to come in and see what's happening inside the box to be able to make stuff work, and she's been able to do that. And once again, I want to congratulate her for the work that she's done. I want to say to the people in that department, don't tire my girl out, because there's a lot of work to do. Carry your own eggs, that's what I'm trying to say, you know, and the antiquated department is coming up to speed, thank you for that, and, and it's all work together to continue to move our city forward. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a vote. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Continue, Mr. Chairman of the housing committee.
The housing committee, this is document number one ninety-eight ten, the housing committees voted to send up a favorable recommendation to approve a transfer of the property at one forty-six, one fifty Union Street to Frank Giles for the price of two thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars, with the conditions stated therein. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, to sell one forty-six dash one fifteen Union Street to Frank Giles in the amount of two thousand six hundred and ninety-five. Are there any questions or comments? If there is none, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Continue.
Document two twenty-two fourteen, the housing committee voted by unanimous vote to send this document with a favorable recommendation, a direct disposition for the family development education, for the sale price of two thousand and five hundred dollars. This is for the property located at one twenty-three, one twenty-seven Franklin Street, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, to sell one twenty-three dash one twenty-seven Franklin Street to the Lawrence Family Development and Education in the amount of two thousand five hundred. If there are no questions, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Continue.
This is document number three twelve fourteen, the housing committee voted by unanimously to send the document number three twelve fourteen with favorable recommendation. This is for thirteen fifteen Whitman Street, for the sale price of forty-one thousand dollars to the Dyer Group Incorporated.
Motion to go past ten.
With the conditions listed therein.
Motion to go past ten, and have it properly seconded, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's Rogers' answer.
Make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion to approve document three twelve fourteen, to sell, and it has been properly seconded, to sell thirteen dash fifteen Whitman Street to the Dyer Group Incorporated, in the amount of forty-one thousand. Are there any questions or comments?
Questions.
Go ahead.
Just, I'm going to ask if Mr. Dyer can come forward with your permission?
Is he part of the committee on you?
I'm part of the housing committee, yes.
Okay, was he there?
Yes, he was.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Dyer, for those people who don't know, this is also the sibling, the brother of Charles Dyer, and both have...
Hold that against you.
Uh?
Excuse me, I'm gonna hold that against you.
We won't hold it against you. But, but both are funny.
They're both what, excuse me, they're both doing what?
They both are funny.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I just want to make sure that people know the difference between the duplex and the townhouses, and, and you're going to be overseeing...
Exactly.
The construction.
Absolutely, I do have one.
So, it's not like you're, you know, double dipping, you're going to finance yourself, but you're actually doing, so I want to make that clear too, okay? So, I was hoping that you would explain that once again, because I have made a commitment in public not to support duplexes, but in the manner that it was defined to me, but you said that there's a difference.
Yeah, duplex style, two-family owner occupant, one owner for the entire building, not, not townhomes, like, it's not a condo, it's one owner, two-family owner occupant, you know, the owner has the right to rent out the other unit to, to, to a renter. Also, one other thing is typically my projects, I like to put this on the record, by the time I take ownership of the properties, six to eight months after the, the property be up, occupied, you know, on the tax roll of the city, so I do put the properties, I do start the properties immediately after acquisition of the properties, and I do complete them in a timely fashion, within a six to nine month period.
Yeah, and you try to comply with the city's goal to have more owner occupant.
And that's, that's my goal, and that's my pledge on it, it will be owner occupant and not investor.
I think one of the most important things also that you share with us at the ordinance committee, sorry, housing committee, wrong committee, housing committee was that there is now a law that would make certain that not, that construction is not a shoddy material, that people can't hear what the other side is doing, that there is going to be some, some work done to maintain privacy within the...
We, we go to the fifth edition of the mask code, building, building, and let me tell you, it's very strict and very, it's very, it's energy efficient, it's, it's, it's one of the toughest codes in the country, and it's, 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 it's not shabby whatsoever, I can assure you.
Okay, so that's what I had to share with the public, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's take a vote, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Chairman of the committee.
Thank you, thank you, good evening.
Can you continue, please?
The housing committee voted by unanimous vote to send document number three thirteen fourteen, unanimous recommendation, dispose of the property located at forty-seven Norris Street, the Greater Lawrence Revolving Loan Fund for the sum of thirty-seven thousand dollars, with the conditions therein. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, to sell forty-seven Norris Street.
Discussion? I, I pulled this one out specifically, this is one, and this might be of some interest to the, the membership, this is one where the Lawrence Great Technical School is actually going to be doing a building on that, and that's why Superintendent Lavoy is here. So, it's one of those things where we have a partnership with another government entity, a school, and I thought that may be worthwhile for us to hear just a snippet about what's going to happen over there.
Yeah, the vocational school has been building across our cities, Andover, North Andover and Methuen and Lawrence, every year, they have built a house, and that house is built by the students, a combination of students from the carpentry, the plumbing department, the electrical department, and the building maintenance department, and then the property is sold to regular citizens in Lawrence, and that money is placed back in the, the revolving loan fund, so.
Thank you. That's how we'll split one. Superintendent, you want to say a few words?
I just want to...
In the microphone.
Yeah. The Great Lawrence Revolving School.
Can you hold your comments until you get to the microphone? Thank you.
I just wanted to say that the Great Lawrence Revolving Fund and the Great Lawrence Technical School that partners together to build a house every year, is excited to have an opportunity again to build in Lawrence. We did one a couple of years ago, this year we didn't do one, but the year before, we did one in South Lawrence, year before that, we did one in North Lawrence, so this is our fourth home, our first one was in South Lawrence, a duplex many years ago, so for us, we're very excited to have the opportunity to show the community what our students can do, as they're out there every day, building and constructing a home right within the community, so people are quite amazed to see what the students are capable of doing. They do the quality that an actual carpenter, plumber, electrician, who are licensed, who do quality work, we abide by the code, and I think that the council is welcome, come on the site anytime and see the quality of the work that the students do, I think we produce a product that, that we're proud of, and I think the city can be proud, proud of to have a home that will last for many years and, and provide a home for a young or a couple from, or a family from the City of Lawrence, hopefully would be able to purchase it.
Any of the counselors have a question for Mr. Lavoy?
I don't have any questions, I just have a small comment, let it be that it's in my district. I'm, I'm, my, both my kids, my older ones graduated from, from the Greater Lawrence Volk Tech, they both came out of culinary arts. I am so super happy that we have kids actually putting their hands on and putting their, their, their dexterities. Is that how you say, what, when you dexter something, you, you acquire it and you put it into work?
And put it into practice, yes.
If I didn't say the word right, the meaning comes incorrect, but anyways, and they, and they do a bunch of other things, like the Meals on Wheels program comes out of the Greater Lawrence Volk Tech, and their kids from the Greater Lawrence Volk Tech, they don't only cook, but their, their, you know, their emphasis is on, you know, we're going to, this meal goes out to the less fortunate of our elders throughout the Greater Lawrence community area. They're able and are fortunate enough to have these meals come from the school, as long as this home is going to come from this school in the hands of our kids from the greater, from our Greater Lawrence area and our youth, and they're going to be able to say, you know, this was done with our hands, this was done through us, and this is them giving back to the City of Lawrence, even though it's an educational part of their integration into that school, but is there integration into the, to the, their life and the rest of their life within our city, because they're actually implementing and putting their stuff into work there. So, I, I just want to thank you all for the, the good work that you're doing coming out into our communities to build homes, to provide food for the elderly, and to continue to be there for everyone who needs your support, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Counselors, there's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly seconded, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Lavoy.
Thank you, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I'll continue on, the housing committee voted by unanimous vote to send document number three forty-eight fourteen to the full, full council with a favorable recommendation. This is to dispose of a property at ninety-nine dash one oh one Franklin Street for the sum of forty-one thousand three hundred dollars for the Merrimack Valley Habitat for Humanity, with the conditions listed therein. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, to sell ninety-one dash one oh one Franklin Street to the Merrimack Valley Habitat for Humanity in the amount of forty-one thousand three hundred. Are there any questions or comments, counselors?
I know he's here. He has done a, a great job, Mr. President, with a lot of the different properties in our city. We know a few families that live in those, and how they're quickly able to get it on the tax roll, which is very good, and how they make sure that the property taxes are included in the mortgage that they work out, so that they will not be delinquent in any way, and other supports that make sure that the property is maintained. I don't know about how many properties you've now done in Lawrence, so...
Eighty-two so far, and we have twelve more underway right now.
Great, and you've, you've done a wonderful job, I just want to make sure that everybody knows how, how good it is, and if anybody wants to help out, what do they do, they just call you, or...
They can call or go on our website and sign up on our website.
So, they don't have to call Jimmy Carter?
Do it again.
But I, I know people who are looking for things to do, and who may have a lot of skills and, and should be able to call you so we can get these homes built and the families in them.
We have plenty to do over at the old convent on Parker Street, we'll put them to work, we're finishing that up.
Okay, on Parker Street, everybody heard that? There's no pay, and they don't get anything from that, so that little commercial, I think, is well deserved.
Thank you, counselor, you're very kind.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Counselors, let's take a vote on the motion, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Continue, Mr. Chairman of the housing committee.
My pleasure, the housing committee voted by unanimous vote to send up document nine dash fifteen to declare the property on Blakeland Street in Manchester, map two twelve, lot twenty, and declare it a surplus property, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, to declare the property located at Blakeland and Manchester a surplus property.
We will, and I'll make a request that we send that back down to the housing committee for...
And this document will be sent down to the housing committee again.
After we vote to declare it surplus, right.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Question?
Yes.
The council gave a map and parcel number that is different than what's on my agenda, I guess. You said map?
Map two twelve, lot twenties, which is the document I have right here.
I'm looking at map one ninety-four, lot twenty, so I just was...
Blakeland Street in Manchester.
Yeah.
Liza, do you have any information on that as...
You might be looking at password.
This is Blakeland in the...
Oh, Blakeland, yeah.
Oh, on the agenda, it's incorrect, but the correct map is two twelve and lot twenty.
That's the surplus one. Yeah, I'll trust him.
Yeah, I'll trust the map.
So the map is saying two twelve? Then perfect, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Yes, two twelve on that, that's what's a map, that's right, yep.
Uh, or in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's take it again, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Uh, last document of the Housing Committee, document fifty fifteen, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the Housing, yes, thank you, the Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send document number fifty fifteen to the full council with a favorable recommendation, uh, to declare surplus the property located sixty-four sixty-six Basswood Street, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to declare sixty-four dash six-six Basswood Street into surplus property, and it will be sent down to the Housing Committee.
Down to Housing for disposition.
So, uh, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, um, the Ordinance Committee, let's go back, [laughing] let's go back to the Ordinance Committee.
Um, thank you.
Madam Chair, the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Council President, the Ordinance Committee met on March fifth, interviewed the following items, um, document number four hundred dash fourteen was handicap parking at one forty-nine Saratoga Street, it was requested by Denise Castillo, um, there is a placard on file, the officer had gone to the site and came back with a favorable recommendation to create handicap parking there, it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to order a public hearing on document four hundred fourteen, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, continue, Madam Chair.
Uh, we got to document number three dash fifteen, it was handicap parking at six hundred and sixty Havrell Street, this was requested by Felix Leonce, um, the officer made a favorable recommendation after a site visit to grant the handicap parking, there is a placard on file, and it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to order a public hearing on document three fifteen, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue.
Um, Council President, with regard to document five dash fifteen and six dash fifteen, there was someone at the, um, ordinance level, I believe it was Pedro Valdez on behalf of both items, and at that time I noticed that one of the documents in his packet was expired, and after going it through more carefully with the city clerk, all the documents in packet number six are expired, and most of the documents in document number five are expired, the problem is, is that they run from like, they're good for one year, and they're from June and July of two thousand fourteen, so technically they're still valid, but he's looking for that summer license, he really should get the new fire permit and new, new other permits, so, um, with the dis, whatever of the committee, I'm hoping to send this back to ordinance, both of those documents, and that we request that the applicant renew those licenses now before we grant the full, because we're gonna grant him a full renewal, those documents are gonna expire in June, and then he's gonna be out there with an expired license all summer long.
Would it be better to keep it at this level and have them submit the renewal, uh, rather than going to the subcommittee?
Well, some of them, um, they expire in December no matter what, is that it?
Yeah.
I was thinking they ran for a year, um, it's up to you, I just, I know sometimes we don't wanna do all the business at this level, but...
Because if they submit a, a valid renewal...
Essentially, that, what I see in the, uh, applications is that they're not filing new applications, for some reason either my sta, probably my staff, and I don't wanna disparage them in any way, forward the same applications to the council as a renewal.
Okay.
They're not supposed to do that, and, uh, that's why they would need to start the process, because the applications and all the forms expire.
Okay.
If it's up to the police department to confirm fingerprinting, that's fine, uh, but it gives the Public Safety Department an opportunity to review anything that, uh, may be faltering.
But like, the sign offs from the fire department from last year, you know, the sign offs from the fire department from July of two thousand fourteen.
So basically, we're gonna be sending back document five fifteen back to the, uh, Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, five fifteen and six fifteen.
Okay.
Both of those documents.
Oh, and six fifteen, both.
Yeah, they're the same.
Okay, you wanna make that in formal motion?
I make that in formal motion.
Through you, Mr. President.
Motion has been made and properly second, uh, question?
Yes, uh, ha, have the petition has been notified about...
Well, we just realized it, I, I knew that some of the documents were expired, and I thought it was just one or two, I didn't realize it was actually the whole package.
Yeah.
So, um, at the meeting, we had said, some of your documents are expired, please go see the city clerk, because these need to be renewed before this meeting, so we did give the applicant notice in that sense, and he did not go to see the city clerk, so in that sense, some of the notice is on the applicant himself, we did give him some level of notice at the subcommittee level, but I agree with you to send out additional notice to the applicant now.
I think that'll be fair, yeah.
Yeah, more than fair, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
[laughing]
Yes, go ahead.
They have has a business address, my address, so that need to be corrected, too.
They don't live with you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the business address, they do have the wrong address, that's my address.
Okay.
Hence the purpose for annual review and update by new applications.
Councilor Alvarez, you had it, Councilor Alvarez, Rodriguez, do you have a comment?
It's a commercial property, but they do not rent from it.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, before, like I said the last year when we came, they were here, and I told them that that was the, the incorrect address, I clarified that last year.
So they were already told in this year?
Yes, they were here last year, and I say the same thing.
Never mind.
Uh, there is a motion on the floor to send both documents to, uh, to the, uh, Ordinance Committee again, uh, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Okay, uh, continue, Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Council President, document number eighteen dash fifteen is parking, it's a request for a one fifteen minute parking space at one thirty-six Newbury Street, um, requested by the Corporation Market, um, Officer Scanlon had gone out to the site, met with the business owner, and found one location that is appropriate for a fifteen minute parking spot, it came out of the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to order a public hearing on document eighteen fifteen, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Document number forty-eight dash fifteen is with regard to handicap parking, it's the removal of a handicap parking spot at ten Brookfield Street, um, Officer Scanlon has gone out to the location and met with the current residents at ten Brookfield, and the person that had the handicap has moved away, um, it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, there's no required language, um, for the removal of the ordinance, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to order a public hearing on document forty-eight fifteen, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President, document number fifty-three dash fifteen is with regard to the Immigrant City Archives, they're doing business as the Lawrence History Center, they're requesting permission to hold their second annual North Canal Classic five K run and walk on Saturday, on, excuse me, on Sunday, May seventeenth, from nine AM to eleven AM. This was requested by Susan Grabsky, the executive director of the organization, uh, a representative from the organization was at the subcommittee level, they have met with the, um, Lieutenant Conway from the Police Department, and he's approved their map, they do have, they've hired the police details and the auxiliary police, and it came out from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to grant them their permit, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to approve document fifty-three, uh, fifteen, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue.
Thank you, Council President, document number fifty-nine dash fifteen is the Fountain of Salvation Church, they're requesting to use the Campanion Common Park on August fifteenth, from four PM to eight PM to hold an evangelical event, um, a representative from the church was at the committee meeting, it did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to grant the permit, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to approve document fifty-nine fifteen, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. That ends committee reports, uh, we're now moving to item five withdrawals of document, maybe we can...
Take it as a block.
We can take it as a block to withdraw document twenty-two fifteen, thirty-four fifteen, seventy-seven thirteen, eighty-one fourteen, two sixty-seven fourteen, three oh one twelve, one forty-nine fourteen, and one sixty-three oh nine on last, any councilors have any objection on any one of these items?
So moved.
Second.
So motion...
You do, you have one?
Yes, I have one request.
Okay, hold on, a motion has been made and second, uh, you, what is your request?
Um, for discussion, uh, we have this in the Budget and Finance Committee, and I requested a, the contract for the ambulance, and I haven't received it yet.
Okay, which document refers to that?
Eighty-one fourteen.
Eighty-one fourteen, you wanna keep that?
Um, I would like to get the contract, and then we draw it, yes.
You wanna keep that, and, uh, let's, um, um, you can make a motion to send a letter to the, uh, to the administration to provide us with a, with a copy of the contract.
All right, I would like to, yes, I would like to re, I would like to send a letter, or resend a letter to whoever has the contract, to be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, hold, hold on to the motion, hold on to the motion.
Okay, so I modify my motion as the author of the, motion to exclude eighty-one fourteen.
Okay, it has been properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, okay, why don't you make the motion that we send a, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to make a motion on item eighty-one fourteen, uh, to send a letter to whoever handles the contract for the city, to send the contract, it was requested of the Budget and Finance Committee for the ambulance, um, and see how much we're getting and what's to deal with it.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
If you're a second, motion has been made and properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, um...
That's it.
Are we gonna table that item, or it's gonna be sent down?
Oh, I'm sorry, make a, uh, let me enter the motion to table that item, eighty-one fourteen.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion has been made to table document eighty-one fourteen, it has been properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, great, um, in terms of all business, uh, there are two items, three forty-three fourteen and fifty-six fifteen, I'm gonna leave fifty-six fifteen for last since we require a, a second session, uh, so, uh, was there any questions, uh, Councilor Aquino, I know you have some concerns regarding, uh, something that we approved, was all your concerns addressed already?
No.
They were not addressed, you didn't get a chance to speak to the city attorney?
No.
Okay, uh, can you please, uh, Abel, can you come forward, please?
I heard her, I heard her ask.
I know that we had a conversation last week, and that there was gonna be conversations between, uh, uh, Councilor Aquino and the city attorney to, uh, include some changes in the language, uh, I even spoke to the city attorney, and he told me that he was going to do that, uh, that he was going to include the language so that if the complex is divided into condos, uh, that each condo unit owner, the new owners will come in front of the city council, uh, to get recertified, and there was a question as to whether, uh, that was enforceable, and my conversation with the attorney, and that was Friday, was that by including that language, okay, uh, it is enforceable. Yes.
If I may, but not just that part.
I'm sorry?
Am I, am I confused that if somebody doesn't comply with the TIF that they should have, is, is that what's gonna go in there, that they should have to give back to city the money that they did not pay in taxes?
No.
Well, it, it isn't, but it's, it could be, it could become local law and lobbied at the State House.
I think that's something that, that's something that also...
Because we need to, just like NACA, when NACA gives us, or anybody, a loan, right, and NACA says, if within the five or ten years you do not comply with this, and you happen to move, sell your house, or et cetera, that we, NACA, get the money back for whatever, so I would like to see, myself, CND Elizabeth Almonte, I would like to see something in our local legislature or, uh, ordinance that we put into place, and if I need to take the day off and continue to, you know, to lobby for the things that we need here in the state, I'll go to the State House and lobby with this, because if somebody does not comply with a TIF within the city of Lawrence, I believe that the city of Lawrence should get back the money that they did not comply with as a TIF.
Uh, you should include it in the next agenda, and...
Definitely.
We can probably ask the city attorney to come in front of the city council to...
I think...
To explain whether that is possible, or whether that is gonna be contradictory to the TIF, uh, requirements by the state.
Yeah, I mean...
Because I think there's a little loophole here in the TIFs that are required, uh, for and beyond the city, and I think this is a little loophole that we need to nip in the butt, because we have gotten, um, not complied with, with other TIFs that have been given out from our city, and we, and we, the citizens of the city of Lawrence, who need to reach this, what's called the debt ceiling, so what happens is, so that the people, the people at home don't understand, that when we give these TIFs, right, what ends up happening is that we have a debt ceiling to reach, so the money that these companies don't pay for, the residents of the city of Lawrence, through their property taxes, et cetera, they're gonna be raised because we need to reach this money here, right? So we're giving all these companies, okay, come to our city, oh, yes, whatever, within five years, oh, yes, you, within the first three years, you only pay this back, or whatever, but what happens if they do not comply with the TIF? Well, the residents of the city of Lawrence need to come up with that money, because where else is it gonna come from to reach our debt ceiling? So if these companies don't comply with the TIF, I think we need that money back, because if we're relieving them of monies so they can come and invest in our city, if they don't comply with that, they should have to pay that money back, which is what has happened before, and I believe that this is a little loophole that I have seen, and obviously other people here now are seeing, um, that we need to put in there, and, and, and just like, you know, I am, I am willing to...
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Well, I'm talking right now, and the floor is yours, I'm talking right now, I am speaking right now.
It's a privilege.
He hasn't told you to talk, he hasn't told you to talk, and I'm speaking right now, all right?
Counselor...
And I'm still speaking, thank you, I still have the floor, Counselor Leplan.
Counselor Monte.
So like I was saying...
Counselor Monte, hold on, hold on, Counselor Monte, when there is a point of order...
Uh-huh.
Okay, uh...
But until you tell him to speak, he can't talk, right?
By process, by process, we allow that individual to speak.
Of course, but that's what they do to shut us up, the ones who are trying to make a point.
I understand that, we have a process.
But until you tell him to talk, he can't talk, right?
But we have a process, please.
So I, I have a, I have a question regarding, just regarding...
He didn't tell you to talk yet.
Rule twenty-one.
Stop!
So we had a final...
No, I'm not going to, because he's being rude.
We had a final rejection on this, Council President, um, rule twenty-one says that when we have, um, had a final, final approval, right, Council President, can I have some order, please?
Listen, I need to prove it off somewhat over here.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, yeah, it is good.
It is good.
No, it is very good.
Council President, can we make a motion?
Yeah.
Uh...
Bullshit.
Oh my...
Okay, anyway, I...
Continue.
It was actually rule twenty-one that I had a question on, it says when ordinance or resolution has been finally rejected or disposed of by the city council, no ordinance or resolution was substantially the same can be brought up by the council member at any time within twelve months following the next action, so I just wanna get your ruling on this, we, we've already finally disposed of this, and so we're putting this on right now, and I'm wondering why we're dealing with this issue at this point when we had a final disposition of this, um, a month or so ago?
Point of order, I think when the council president, point of order to your point of order, that, I think when the council president said that it should be placed on the agenda, it, it's a discussion for another night with, for, you know, much, we gotta look at it, research it, it, it doesn't mean this particular contract.
Council President, um, with regard to Counselor Aquino's initial question, um, she did very clearly at our meeting say that she was looking for regulations that prevented clearly, at our meeting, say that she was looking for regulations that prevented the condo-ization of the property, she was very clear about that, and I think Mr. Vargas was very clear back to her that he was gonna work to resolve that, and it seems like she's legitimately asked that question to the city attorney, and that we are waiting for clarification, but I see legitimate conversation on that point, and that seems to be valid. The way I understand the law is that the condo-ization is a transfer of title, so in that process, it becomes a transfer of title that would require reapproval and reaplication back to this body, and that seems to be the legal opinion of the city attorney, seems to be consistent with that, the council hasn't gotten the documentation that she's anticipating. That's one item. Item number two, separate and distinct, is if there's a TIF at some point that doesn't follow through, are we as a body able to pursue those monies? Councilor Almonte raised a point of possibly lobbying at the State House level, she hasn't done that, and until that's done, we can't enforce a law that doesn't exist, so I think to pursue that avenue of conversation tonight is frivolous, because it's laws that don't exist, that haven't been lobbied for, that haven't even been discussed yet, so for us to be discussing that point of information at this time, it seems like we're putting the cat before the horse. There's one legitimate question on the floor that needs to get resolved, but the second issue has really nothing to do with tonight's conversation, so I'm just trying to break the two items apart, and just keep the conversation on track. Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, I have tried a couple of times, or, we have tried a couple of times to get with the city attorney, I met with him once, and I did ask him about if we can get money back, so that wasn't part of my motion, but I did wanted to know if that was something that we were gonna be able to do. I had a, I had a call from, I talked to Abel yesterday, and the city attorney called me, when Abel was in his office, to let me know that if any questions he could answer over the phone, which I say no, because it's something that I would like to talk to him privately, and in his office, face to face, so he couldn't do it this morning, like, this morning he had an appointment, and I was expecting a call today, I didn't receive it, but I guess tomorrow will be a better day for me to go and verify that what I have been told, it's the truth. I asked Mr. Abel, the information that I have is that we cannot enforce whatever we put on the contract, because it's a state law, it's like, how many people they gonna have as employees, we can, we can put it on the contract, but we cannot enforce it. If we, if we're gonna put something in a contract, because it's important to me, and we cannot enforce it, why should we put it? That's my point, that's why I wanted to sit down with city attorney, to verify that the information that I have is the correct one, that way I can make my decision, it's either, even though we're not gonna be able to enforce it, we put it on the contract, that doesn't work for me. So I wanna make sure that whatever we put on the contract, it's something that we're gonna be able to enforce, and that's why we need, I need to talk to the city attorney about it, yes.
Again, based on my conversation on Friday, he was going to include the language that you requested, and-
Yeah, but my question is-
And it was his opinion that it is enforceable.
Exactly.
Okay, it is enforceable.
I would agree, I mean, in the real estate work that I do, when someone changes their house, if you have a two-family house, even if you still own it, but you convert it into a condo, that's a transfer of title, you know, so I would think that the same thing would apply to a commercial building, that that would be still seen as a transfer of title, so that would, even if the same gentleman owned all the units at the beginning, by just putting it into a condo, he would have to come back and reapply.
All we have to, what we wanna do is make sure-
Yeah.
That the document that is signed does include that language.
Yes.
So, Mr. Vargas, we wanna make sure-
Yeah.
That when that document is signed, that that language is included, and that you send back to us a copy, showing that that language is already included in that document when it's signed.
And that we're gonna be able to enforce it. If we're not able to enforce it, there's not need of my signature.
Again, it's already the opinion of the city attorney, that it is enforceable, okay?
Do you mind if I, if I could just add a little bit to that? This was voted on, on February third, I had the changes done a week later, so I've had this for a month.
I need to clarify something.
No, no, it's fine, so I've had this for a month, I missed a deadline with the state to get it before the EACC, which is the board that votes on whether or not they're gonna approve this, and I've made countless phone calls, text messages, emails, I've sent this contract, not just to, to the clerk, clerk Maloney, but also to Councilor Aquino as well. So the language is here, I've received confirmation from our city attorney that the language does add, does do what was voted on, the amendment that was voted on, that says, "Approve contingent upon further agreement to prohibit subdivision and/or sale of condominium," that was the vote and the amendment that was taken on February third. The language that was drafted by myself, and, and was further corrected by our city attorney, suggests that that is the case, so what was voted on, on February third, is listed on here, and that's confirmed to me by the truth, the truth of anything legal-related, our city attorney, and that was done three weeks ago, maybe, maybe four weeks ago, so, you know, I have, I have a mandate to work with, with our state, our state partners, in this case, the Office of Economic Development, we have a regional director, and in fairness to me, and to the process and the applicant, I've received phone call after phone call after phone call, so I've tried to portray that same sense of urgency, because I'm getting the pressure. So at one point or another, I think I've complied with the request of Councilor Aquino, and I hope that we could take this, that we could get the signature on the certification of an economic opportunity area, and move forward, so that I could save a little bit of face with the state, which they've been very helpful to us.
Council President, may I?
Go ahead.
Mr. Vargas, it's been witnessed that I have been to the city attorney's office multiple times. He was witness yesterday, when the city attorney said that he was gonna call me today, and he's been witness that I've been in the parking lot, and he's been in a, in a meeting with the city attorney, which I haven't been able to see. So it's not that I haven't been able to come, I work. I work, and I've been here more than five times. It's not that I haven't done my job, I've been doing my job, I've been trying to get in touch with them, but there's certain stuff that I'm not gonna be forced to do if I don't want, if I don't feel comfortable doing. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a comment, I wanted, I wanna say that it's important to note that, that tonight, we're all in support of this, and getting it on the contract, I unfortunately couldn't be here at that council meeting, but I was able to see it, and, and I know exactly what was asked for, and I, but the second part is that I think people are feeling passionate about the fact that before you, there have been companies who have gotten a lot of support from our city, and then we've been bamboozled, they abandoned the property, and they leave, they don't pay the water bill, or they don't pay, they leave us stuck with a big bill, and so, the passion that we're hearing, it's, that you saw from Council Almonte, is also passion that I've seen with, with our constituents, who get angry because, why do we always let people take advantage of us? So I'm very happy that another night, we're gonna be able to look at it, and finally see whether or not there's a way for us to fight back.
Okay.
Just a point of inquiry, I just, I think I heard Mr. Vargas say he's waiting for a signature from us, is that-
No, just one signature.
My signature.
It's her signature, because obviously her concerns were not being satisfied yet. Okay, so.
So that's done, I mean, I just wanted to clarify that, that, that this particular contract is done. That's it, and our discussion is something else, it's gonna be bigger.
The contract is not done.
It's not done until-
No, it's still pending, because it needs formal signature, and-
And the language is not on the contract?
So the, so there's three, there's three pieces of paper that need to get signed, one is the TIF agreement that's signed between, that's signed between the mayor and the property owner, the business owner, and then there's two other documents that's signed by the city council, and that's the certification of the economic opportunity area, and the certification of the project, those, both of those documents need to be present when being presented to the state commission that makes decisions on this, so there's the mayor's part, and the city council's part, they both have to go before the state, before they're able to vote, or take up the, the TIF.
So the language, the new language, Council President, can you, can you explain to me, has the new language, is that what's missing?
I think that the best thing to do right now is to have Mr. Vargas come back with the revised contract.
It's through you, Mr. Vargas.
I have it here.
The contract has been revised, I signed the revised contract.
No, 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 it has not been revised.
So what is it?
The language, the language has not been changed.
It's included in what he-
So the signatures have been obtained, but the final language on the contract has not been received.
I, I don't think that's right.
It seems to me that the logical thing to do is to have Mr. Vargas come back with the final language, which will include a session where it will require individual condo units, if it is divided into condo units, to come back and be recertified, so.
Do we need to wait for a meeting for that, though?
I'm sorry?
We don't need a meeting. I mean, we've already voted on it, how many, do we need all of us to go to a meeting?
No, just, just one signature, and again, the agreement is signed, the agreement is signed, pending, or with, with the language, I can read the language that was added.
Since, again, since Council Aquino is the one signature that is missing, it seems to me logical then that she will review that page where the language is included, and then if she's satisfied, sign it, simple.
Simple.
Okay, and do we agree?
We agree.
Just as a technical matter, I do not have the final draft, so nobody has signed the final draft, it'd have to be recirculated for signatures by everyone, I can do that certainly, and coordinate that, that's not a problem.
No, that's, that's not entirely true, so the, again, there's three pieces of document, this, this one that has all the language, that's, excuse me, this, this one that has all the language, specific to what Council Aquino had requested, is only signed by the mayor, the only, the other document that you had is a certification of an economic opportunity area, which is not included, that's just certifying the project, and certifying the area as an economic opportunity area and or project, and that, and that does not have this language.
Does it make sense now?
Did he give the language?
I have, I have the language, I can read it, so you-
He gave it to you, the language.
Excuse me?
Did it come from the city attorney?
I, I drafted the language, and I sent it to the city attorney, and he made what he felt were the appropriate changes, and sent it back, and he said that, to his, to his satisfaction, it was done.
Okay, point of information, Mr. President.
Yes.
It is important to know also that the language that has been added by both Director Vargas and the city attorney are in, in, in reference to a Massachusetts general law, so it's not just language that was created by, by the city, it's language that is in our state, currently written, so.
Like I said before, may I?
The language has not been included yet.
The lang, again, there is, let me just re-say what Director Vargas has been explaining, there are three different documents, one document is to be signed by the administration, and two documents are to be signed by the councilors that have voted in favor of the document, the, one of the documents that, that it's, the document that needs that particular language is the one that is signed by the administration, when we voted in favor of it, it did not have it, but after that, has been included in it, so that's-
Not as far as the city attorney knows that, in my conversation with the city attorney on Friday, that particular language had not been included yet.
It's, I've read the document, I have read the document.
Then, then obviously, there is a, there is a problem here, because if the attorney says that the language specifically stating, if the language specifically stating that if the, if the whole is divided in parts, into condos, that each new owner of the condos had have come to be recertified, that language is not there yet.
Yes, it is, I can read it to you here.
Can you copy that, can we do that?
May I please?
Yeah, have, have copies.
My point here, it's not if we put it on the contract, if it's, if we're gonna be able to enforce it, that's my point, we don't have to talk about this again, and again, and again, the point is-
I already stated, I already stated that the attorney assured me that that language is enforceable.
Exactly, but we're going over and over and over again of the same thing, and that's not my point, my point is, like, the same problem that we had with, when we asked them to hire certain amount of people from Lawrence, we can ask them to do it, but we cannot enforce it, it's the same point, it's not what it's on the contract that I'm worried about, it's, we're gonna be able to enforce it, and I don't want this subject to go, whatever is in the contract, it's not about what's in the contract, it's if we're gonna be able to enforce it.
Can you guide us, Mr. Vargas has to wear, the language is included?
So the, so it's section twelve, it's highlighted in yellow.
Last page.
It's highlighted in yellow.
Okay.
Page five.
Okay, Councilor Aquino, do you wanna hear directly from the attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Something, I did ask Abel for the answer, and he asked me to ask the city attorney.
I'm sorry, I-
I asked Mr. Vargas about my questions, and he, I don't wanna say that he doesn't have the correct answer, but he feels more comfortable if I have the answer from the city attorney.
Okay, will you please do that tomorrow, and-
I will.
Mr. Vargas, will you make sure that the city attorney somehow gets in touch with-
And, and, and I didn't say that, that, I don't know the answer, I said that if you don't feel comfortable with my answer, you should confirm the city attorney.
Well, yesterday, we spoke yesterday, Modesto, we were in a conference call.
Yep, I said that if you don't trust my judgment.
I'm gonna wait for Modesto. And it was, it was over the phone with you, and he said that he wasn't able to give me the answer, that he preferred the city attorney to give me the answer, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
So, I'm not sure if we're gonna be, looks like we're gonna be delaying this.
We're not gonna be delaying this, I just want to make sure that this is something-
The council from district, the getting some assurance directly from the city attorney, that's all.
That's it.
Okay?
I have one request, I mean, if this could be done as speedily as possible, I'm two weeks overdue on a deadline, and the state has been nice enough to give me some allowances and extra time, so I'm, I'm two weeks over on a deadline, so if it could be done, you know, expeditedly-
Well, it was supposed to be done today, and you were there, but I never received the call, that it was supposed to-
Again, again, I've been at this for, for a month, but, doesn't matter, I, I need to be able to get it done as soon as possible, so I could send it out to the appropriate state party, in order to, to make sure that we're able to move forward with this, I, I feel that we've complied with the request of the councilors, and I hope that we can move forward with this.
Okay, then let's leave it at that, it's in your court, okay? I'm going to send new businesses to the different committees, and then we're gonna go back to document fifty-six fifteen, to have an executive session.
Are we gonna withdraw the document, table the document?
We are going to, it has already been approved, so.
Yeah, I'll just hold the committee's go back.
Yeah, so we don't need to do anything with it. Okay, document sixty-seven fifteen, councilors, I need your opinion on this matter, some of you may have read the letter from the mayor.
Which document, I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Document sixty-seven fifteen.
Okay.
We posted the position, we, and let me refresh your memory going back to, from the beginning, this council voted not to renew the contract for our city attorney, and instead opted to go out and post a position, we did post a position, applications were received, a subcommittee, a screening committee was formed, but because of the snow, there were several meetings that were scheduled, and for reasons beyond our control, those meetings were canceled. The mayor sent a letter to us, members of the city council, indicating, suggesting that we should go ahead and- that we should go ahead and negotiate again with our city attorney, instead of going through the process of interviewing all the applicants and candidates. I put it in the agenda, because I would like to hear your opinion. If your opinion is favorable, to go ahead and negotiate only with our city attorney, and send letters to the applicants apologizing for the delay, and explaining to them the, that we were going to do that, then I will go ahead and send this document 6715 to the committee as a whole, so that the committee as a whole will deal with the negotiations. So, I wanna hear your opinion on this matter, before I do anything with it. So, yes, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I, if I remember correctly, within the letter that the mayor sent down to us recommending that we go for a three-year contract with, with the attorney body, he also stated, I believe, that he would, he would not send any, any other name down but attorney body, if I remember correctly.
So, is it, makes sense to go here and interview people, send someone else's name up, and he turns it down anyways? I'm, I'm sorry, I...
I have the hard right.
Yes, me too. I'm sorry, say, say that again.
It says, does it make sense, if he, if he's going to insist on sending attorney body's name down to us, even though we interview other people, and we send up someone else's name, he's not gonna accept it?
Uh, the mayor? The mayor doesn't, the, I, the decision is, is totally in the hands of the full council. Now, he, the mayor can choose not to sign the contract, but the mayor's the one that is recommending that we go ahead and, that we go ahead...
Go ahead, right.
And, and, and stick with the city attorney, and begin negotiations. So, I would assume that once we agreed, if we do agree, that he's going to sign it. That's my perception. Okay? So, what is your feeling? Do you feel that we should do that, or...
Well, my, my, my...
Or should we go ahead and, and, and continue with the subcommittee, the screening committee, to interview all, all candidates?
Well, my, my thoughts are, I looked at the...
How do we get there?
The point system that was set up is to determine how many people are gonna be interviewed initially. And if I remember correctly, Attorney Body topped the ticket in all of them, over all of them. So, he would be one, probably one of the five that would be interviewed. You know? But again, his point system is higher than anyone else that submitted an application.
I'm sorry?
His points, his point system was higher than anyone else that had submitted an application.
No, it wasn't. He was second. There was a woman attorney that was higher than him.
No, there wasn't.
Yes, there was.
If you looked at it, it wasn't.
I think...
Do you have it there?
Anybody has them?
The other thing was, he also gave someone zero credit for municipal experience, Mr. Bonet, when the gentleman most definitely had municipal experience as an attorney, because it was with a Boston Housing Authority, opposed to a traditional municipality. He said, oh, I didn't realize that would be municipal experience. I, I definitely read through all the packages. I, I went to the meeting, that I guess was canceled, and I was the only one that showed up. I did read all the applications. I, I met with Mr. Bonet, and I thought there was, Mr. Body's application is excellent. I thought there were also two other excellent applicants.
There were three, there were three to write up there.
Oh, two, the one that, I think she actually had the highest score, than Mr. Body himself, and then another gentleman who did not have the highest score under the initial formula that, but I asked Mr. Bonet, please reread the application, because he actually has a lot of the things you gave him zero for. And he did reread the application of the person that I suggested, and he said he was wrong. He did miscore him. So, there were three excellent applicants. But if the mayor's not gonna sign the point, this whole, I think your point is, this whole conversation is moot.
That if he's not gonna sign what?
He has to sign the final...
The contract.
Yeah. But also the, the Employment Action thing, isn't the mayor the person that has to sign those? I think the point is kinda moot.
Well, again, the mayor is recommending that we, that we go ahead and, and stick with the city attorney that we have, and interview, and negotiate. Okay? So, I assume that if we choose to do that, okay, then we will go ahead and, and do that. And he will not probably oppose to the agreement of the city council. But again, we, we have two options. And, and obviously, what I would like to do is entertain a motion to, for either one of those motions. One motion would be to, to go ahead and, and negotiate with our current city attorney, okay? And then I will send that document to the committee as a whole. And the second option is to go ahead and continue with the screening committee, so, to interview, to interview all, all the qualified applicants. So, those are, those are the two options that we have. Okay? Yes, Mr. Plant?
They have to be all of qualified candidates, or can we, can we...
All the, all the pre-qualified candidates. Only all the pre-qualified candidate, by the personal director, which are, I believe, six.
So, I mean, my sense is that in the end, we may still go with Attorney Body, but my sense is that it's good to cast the net a little bit, and see who, who else is out there and is willing to work for our city. At the very end, it may be Mr. Body, or it may be somebody else, but I'm willing to go ahead and to...
Motion to go past 11.
There's a motion on the floor to go past 11. Is there a second?
Second.
Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Continue.
I'm serious, no.
I'm sorry? Oh, we'll have to take a vote?
Yes.
Beyond 11?
Yes.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Counsel Vasquez.
Counsel Vasquez.
Counsel Plant.
Yes.
Counsel Toomey.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes. Counsel Almonte.
We have no choice.
Counsel Aquino.
Yes.
I say yes, I take.
Yeah.
Counsel Bernal.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President.
No.
And Counsel President.
Yes. The ayes have it.
So, you asked me for my opinion, so that's my suggestion, is that we go ahead and we, we open it up. What I don't want this to do is to drag on for months and months and months. So, if, if, if we as a body have the aptitude and the willingness to make this happen in a short amount of time, I'm saying less than six weeks, and we get something here and ready to go, then I'm in mind to do it. If we can't, if we don't have the ability to do that, I don't wanna have this thing linger. You know, my sense is that we go with, with the mayor's recommendation, but my sense is that we open it up if we can do it quickly, you know, relatively quickly.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to go with the mayor's recommendation, and I would like to make a motion to negotiate with City Attorney Charles Body.
I will second that.
There is a motion on the floor to go and negotiate with the city attorney body.
Second.
Motion had been properly seconded. Any additional comments?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah. I felt that we had the opportunity to expand, you know, our horizon, see what was out there, make it clear that contracts, renewal of contracts are not automatic. But after all these months of picking his brain on all these issues, I don't feel comfortable anymore saying that someone else should be doing the job. I mean, if somebody else should be doing the job, then why do we continue to use them? I mean, it's just, and I don't like, I don't like to use people. So, I am in total agreement with...
We're on that we're paying him a salary.
Yeah. I know that we're paying him a salary. I know that we're paying him a salary, but it's also, I think people also wanna be respected, and, and I know that we're paying him a salary, but a lot of that comes in issue of respect.
The, the ordinance says that the attorney will continue until a suitable replacement is found. So, obviously, he will, he has continued to do his work, and we have continued to use him in his, in his position as a city attorney. Okay? Anybody else on the motion? Nobody else? There is a motion on the floor that we negotiate with our current city attorney. That's the motion. It has been properly seconded. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, now. Roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President.
Yes.
Counsel Bernal.
Yes.
Counsel Aquino.
Yes.
Counsel Almonte.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes noted.
Counsel Toomey. Yes.
Counsel LaPlant.
No.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes. The ayes have it. I'm going to send, I'm gonna assign the task of doing the negotiation to the council as a whole. So, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, it is imperative that we move as fast as possible in scheduling the committee as a whole.
Have I ever let you down?
No, not at all. No, 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 I'm simply, I'm saying, I'm simply stating, I'm simply stating emphatically, that's all.
I'm quick.
We have already taken a long time on this matter, and I...
Oh, okay, but it's not reflection on me and my performance.
No, 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 no. I'm simply stating that we have taken a long time on this matter, and obviously, I would like to make sure that we go ahead and do it as fast as possible.
Okay, we have to, I just, I make clear.
Yes.
You know, my children watch this. I don't want them to think, you know...
I'm sure.
And also, so...
I'm sure.
And I, I will, I will, you know, that every task that you have given me, I have dutifully taken care of it, and it hasn't taken more than one meeting to do so, right?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, I will continue assigning the new business. Document 6815, Run Work Lawrence Permission. It's gonna be sent to the ordinance committee. Document 6915, Handicap Parking, Ordinance Committee. Document 7015, Parking Mary McStreet, to the ordinance committee. Document 7115, Semanis Pan and Lawrence, to that, to ordinance committee. Document 7215, Semanis Pan and Lawrence, I'm gonna send that to the ordinance committee. Document 7315, Iglesia de Cristo, Rios de Aguaviva, Ordinance Committee. Document 7415, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, Budget and Finance. Document 7515, Employee Disclosure, to the personal committee. Document 7615, Appointment Commission on Disability, to the personal, personal committee. Document 7715, Appointment Cemetery Board, to the personal committee. Document 7815, City Lawrence Polling Hours Increase, Ordinance Committee. And Document 8015, Taxi Livories License Acquisition, to the ordinance committee. That basically, that basically completes our agenda, with the exception...
Aye.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The Documents 23814, 23914, and 24014, that we have already approved, we need to waive the 30 days. So, Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, will you have the honor? Making the motion?
Sure. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the 30 days for the following three documents, 23814, 23914, and 24014.
Who will second the motion?
Second.
Motion had been made on second, to waive the 30 days on those two, three documents, Document 23814, 23914, and 24014. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
No.
No? Okay, I'm sorry. Roll call.
I voted no against that, yep.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlant.
No.
Counsel Toomey.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes noted, I'm sorry. Counsel Almonte. And Counsel Aquino.
Yes.
Counsel Bernal.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes. Yes. Okay, the ayes have it. Councillors, just briefly, Counsel Reyes excused herself from this meeting because of a long time appointment that she had in Boston, and she was not gonna get here in time. So, she excused herself, and she asked me to convey that message.
I think she still has a chance.
No, between, obviously, she was gonna get here way too late, and she was gonna be about, she was gonna miss about half of the meeting, so...
Half. The best half, yes.
Okay, councillors, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session with Document 5615, for the purpose of, for the purpose of allowing the city clerk to seek outside legal counsel in regard to the matter of...
Do you wanna speak openly, or?
Supina to, subpoena.
In regard to a subpoena for...
To testify about this.
About this.
In the case in chief, of Gustavo Garcia.
Okay. Again.
You should test it, Tom.
Yes. So, I would like to entertain a motion to go into a second session.
So, move.
So, move.
Discussion.
Second.
Motion had been made, and properly seconded, discussion?
Discussion.
So, many discussions.
Oh, discussion, yes.
Yeah. We have a member, I, I would like to yield the floor to someone from the audience that has a question, before we go into executive session.